Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
So we are ready to start the meeting. So good evening, everyone, to the Pittsburgh Common Council meeting for November 25, 2025. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting at 6:34 PM. And please stand up for the place of allegiance. Thank you. Next is roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Lattasay.
Here.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Raggstead.
Here.
Motion carries. All right, I'm sorry, you have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, we move to item four. It's public appearances for non-agenda items and new appointments. We don't have anyone for public appearances, so we are going to move to item four A. It's council vote to appoint District Four Seat Eight candidate.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just recap briefly what has happened so far and talk about the process this evening to fulfill the District Four seat that was vacated due to Alder Vaffedari's resignation. At the November Committee of the Whole last week, November 17, two candidates who had applied to fill the vacant seat, Adam Guile and Jake Lepper, were interviewed by the Common Council. This evening, they will have a three-minute opportunity to provide a verbal statement to the Common Council in advance of the Common Council's vote. The Common Council will vote via written ballot, and then the clerk will read off each alder's vote after the voting has concluded. A majority of votes, which is four, is needed for one of the candidates to be selected to fill the vacancy. If a candidate does not get four votes or more on the first round, we will likely go to a second round and go from there. The mayor will only vote in the event of a tie. And then, once the vote is concluded and one of the candidates has been selected by majority, our clerk, Tracy Oldenburg, will swear them in, and they will immediately be able to assume the roles and responsibilities of the District Four alder. The mayor and council president will make any appropriate committee appointments yet this evening for that alder. And then, I, as a city administrator and our city attorney, will work with the newly appointed alder for orientation and onboarding at a later time. Any questions from the Common Council at all? No? All right, we will have Adam Guile speak first. The order for this evening was in reverse order from our November 17 Committee of the Whole, where Adam was interviewed second. So, as I mentioned, each candidate will have three minutes to provide a verbal statement.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Thanks for letting me jump in front of all of you and your important issues. Again, I guess I'd like to affirm my willingness and eagerness to fill the vacant alder seat. As a reminder, I'm Adam Guile. I am a resident of a subdivision here in Pittsburgh in District Four, but also a farmer and landowner also in District Four. Earlier today, I was doing some fall tillage in this beautiful weather, so... That's me. My background is land surveying. I have a degree from Madison College in land surveying. I went to UW-Madison for cartography and human geography and urban planning. Then I went on to Texas A&amp;M for a master's of law in real estate. My background is firmly rooted in city infrastructure and development. Development is one of the key issues facing District Four. I think it's a necessary and important aspect of District Four, being the only remaining district with that asset, land. I love Pittsburgh for its diversity and its blend of uses. I look forward to seeing that expand in District Four under controlled growth. With my background, I believe that I'm exceptionally well-qualified to represent both my district and the diversity that comes to it and exists already here in Pittsburgh. I am acutely aware of the time commitment that this role takes and prepared to take that on. Last week, you asked if I intended to run in the spring election, and I absolutely do. In between breakfast and fall tillage this morning, I was placing orders for yard signs, and that is a goal that I accomplished today. I am prepared to jump right in. I have reviewed the agenda for tonight. I plan to hold meetings within District Four. If appointed, meet and greets. The residents, many of those near me, are already aware of my intention, but also to meet with businesses and the constituents of District Four. You have 23 seconds to spare.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Next will be Jake Lepper.
Thank you. I would like to reiterate thanks, like Adam gave, for this opportunity. I guess I don't feel a need to revisit what I said in my interview, because I don't have the time, frankly. But also, I think it's important to convey what the role of alder is, because that's the responsibility that you're about to fill. So I guess ultimately, I think that the... Any public office at its best should be about stewardship. I'm not seeking ownership of accomplishments or personal accolades, but I want to be a steward of the public trust, of the resources of the city, and ultimately, the hopes for the people and the future of Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh is at an inflection point. It's a city seeking to progress, but maintain its character, to help the underserved without abandoning other people's futures, and ultimately, to welcome newcomers without forgetting about the folks who have long-established roots here. I'm not ignorant to the fact that there are people who, probably in this room, who have lived in the city longer than have been on the planet, and I lend great reverence to that. So I obviously cannot claim to know how to solve all of the problems of the future, but I bring a steady mind, my human-centered ethics, a willingness to listen, and a willingness to be challenged in my ideas, especially by people whose life experiences are different than mine. Ultimately, I think disagreement that is done in good faith is a hallmark of good government. I also think that good government happens in chambers like these, and it's seldom dramatic, and it happens with the patient and diligent work of you all, choosing well day after day. So I hope to join the leadership of this city, because Pittsburgh deserves and has leaders who are thinking beyond their next election and the next news cycle, who are willing to consider the unseen consequences of their actions, and who are willing to step up to ensure that the policy that is made by the city is not just an abstraction, but that it's made with a careful consideration of the lives that it's going to land on. So if you entrust me with this role, know that I will bring the same quiet diligence and commitment that I've brought to every role I have held in my life. Thank you again.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, so next, we are moving to the vote.
I'm going to proceed to the vote.
Second.
All those in favor of proceeding with the vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, the votes are in. And Alder Herps has voted for Adam Guile. Alder Maldonado has voted for Jake Lepper. Alder Jetzer has voted for Jake Lepper. Alder Gerhart has voted for Jake Lepper. Alder Raggstead has voted for Jake Lepper. And Alder Dancer Jr. has voted for Jake Lepper. And Mike Lattasay has voted for Jake Lepper. It is... Six to one?
Okay, so we have majority. So congratulations, Jake Lepper. You've been appointed to District Four, a council member. So please come, so we can swear you. So, and I also want to thank you, Adam. You know, I sent you both this morning an email, because I want to say thank you. You two are working in commission right now, and I want to say thank you for, you know, for your willingness to serve. I hope you, you know, continue doing that in the future, okay? Thank you.
Hi there. I'll have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Jake Lepper.
Who have been elected to the office of alderperson.
Who have been elected to the office of alderperson.
In District Four, Seat Eight.
In District Four, Seat Eight.
In the city of Pittsburgh.
In the city of Pittsburgh.
Dane County, Wisconsin.
Dane County, Wisconsin.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
The state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of set office.
Of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
I do have an ultimatum.
Yeah, but we are going to wait until... For what? Oh, we need to nominate. They need to approve it, the council.
Yeah, so you make the appointment, and then they can vote on her.
Okay. Okay, so what I had to do, the chief, that I do, and then she had to do that. So we had to do separately.
I would do it.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we need to vote. Don't leave. Okay, we're ready? Okay, so next is item four C. It's the mayoral appointment for the new alder, for Jake, to committees and commission. So I want to recommend he will be appointed to the Community and Economic Development Authority, EMS.
And for the standing committees, recommend appointment to personnel committee.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Second.
All those in favor of this appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So, okay. So next, we move to item four D. So this is what everyone is here, I hope so. So it's the presentation of the 2025 Mayoral Award. So this year, I'm going to do it different. I have help, you know, Gabriela, the president of the council. She's going to help me with this award. So first, I want to say good evening, one as notches, everyone, for being here tonight. Every year, our city takes a moment to recognize individuals and organizations who represent the very best of Pittsburgh. Those who work, those whose work, leadership, and character boost our economy in a meaningful and lasting ways. The Mayor's Award are given across several categories, each highlighting a unique contribution to our city, whether it's service, innovation, leadership, community impact, or commitment to building a stronger and more inclusive Pittsburgh. This category helps us to honor not only what people do, but the values behind their actions, like integrity, dedication, compassion, ambition. Receiving a Mayor Award is more than a recognition. It is a way for us, or to all of us here, to see that we see you, we appreciate you, and because of you, Pittsburgh is better. So tonight, we celebrate individuals and organizations who step up, who lead by example, and who help move our community forward. Each recipient represents the spirit of service and the power of community. So we are going to begin. And the process will be, I will introduce a recipient, then we are going to take a picture, and then we move with the second. And then, please don't leave, because then we are going to, we are planning to take a group picture, okay? So don't leave after you take your award, okay? So... A second. So the first award is for the resident award, is for Janice Huge. Janice Huge is a retired HR professional, a small business owner, and dedicated community advocate. With a strong background in corporate, government, and nonprofit leadership, she has built a career centered on people, purpose, and progress. As the first Black member appointed to the Commission on Aging Well in 2023, Janice has become a champion for growth and inclusivity in Pittsburgh. Her passion for older adults and commitment to lifelong learning inspired her to create the Lunch and Learn Program at the Pittsburgh Senior Center, which provides valuable resources on health, culture, wellness, and more. Janice has actively participated in the links where she promoted and supported education, and she also has worked with United Way and the Black Chamber of Commerce advancing opportunities for entrepreneurship, equity, and community development. She currently serves on the Community Equity Advisory Committee, the Commission on Aging Well, and the Pittsburgh Housing Plan Steering Committee, where she continues to advocate for inclusive policies and equitable growth. With a distinguished record of public service, Janice's background includes three gubernatorial appointments to various state committees, reflecting her leadership and dedication to civic engagement. Guided by her mantra, "Our community's greatest asset is its people," Janice's work and drive are firmly rooted in service and empowerment, as uplifting others and helping to build a stronger, more connected community. Janice has been a resident of the city of Pittsburgh for 28 years. So congratulations, Janice.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you. This was truly a surprise for me. I didn't even know about this program. But I tell you, I am indeed grateful for this opportunity and this recognition. But I do this not only, not for recognition, but I do it because I care about my community, and I want to be a part of the solution. I think that with all of us giving a little bit, just a little bit back to our community, it makes us all better. It helps us to grow. It moves us forward to being a more welcoming and inclusive, thriving community for all of us. And it's opportunities for everyone. I believe, I know you've heard them say, "If you see something, say something." I say, "If you see something, you know you can help, say something and do something." I think it's so important. Whatever you can do, whatever skill you have, get involved. It helps us to become a better city. So thank you so much for this recognition, Mayor, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Our next award is one of our business awards, Quivvy's Grove. One of the city's most cherished landmarks, Quivvy's Grove celebrated its 45th anniversary as a restaurant this year, but it is much more than that. It's a gathering place, a piece of living history, and a true Pittsburgh treasure. The property's story stretches back to the 1850s, when John Mann built the original mansion and stable using local timber and stone. It changed hands over the years, with each owner adding a chapter, until Joe Garten came along in 1979. Joe, a passionate cook and lover of historic places, saw these old buildings and imagined something new. Just a year later, Quivvy's Grove opened in May 1980, bringing Wisconsin's traditions and hospitality to life. Since then, Quivvy's Grove has become more than a restaurant, with its 19th-century charm, beautiful grounds, and gracious service. It's welcomed generations of families, friends, and neighbors. By the ownership of Craig Kunning and Deirdre Garten, this restaurant is a community anchor for community celebrations, anniversaries, gatherings, and helping foster civic pride. Places like Quivvy's Grove don't just enrich our city, they define it. They remind us of where we came from and inspire us to preserve what makes Pittsburgh unique and welcoming. Accepting the award tonight on behalf of Quivvy's Grove is Craig Kunning and Deirdre Garten. Welcome, come on up.
...that we put in. I was reminded that in 1979, when the Gartens started this project, before Pittsburgh was even a city, Joe Garten appeared before the town board to get the necessary approvals to be able to go on with this project. And he was asked by one of the town board members in such, in kind of a negative way, that he was asked, "How do we know this won't turn into just another Tony Franks?" To which Joe turned and responded, "I can only hope that we can be that successful." And here we are, 45 years later, and I'm glad to say our relationship with Pittsburgh has been smooth sailing. We thank you for the support. We thank the citizens of Pittsburgh for the support. It's just been a great ride, and thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'd just like to acknowledge our fabulous set of employees that we've had for 45 years. We, some of our oldest employees have been with us for 40 years. And we are very lucky to have had such wonderful supporters and people who have embraced the kind of values that Joe and Craig really live out every single day. So thank you to our employees.
Next is our other business award, Kelly Moss, Inc. Kelly Moss, Inc. is a nationally recognized leader in Porsche racing, restoration, and high-performance engineering. Founded in 1988 and now owned by Victoria Thomas and Andy Kilcoyne, the company has transformed from a small Midwest racing team into an industry powerhouse known for innovation, craftsmanship, and excellence. Under Victoria Thomas's leadership, Kelly Moss continues to make its mark not only on the racetrack, but also in breaking barriers within a traditionally male-dominated industry. Her vision and commitment to empowering women in motorsports and business have refined, have redefined what leadership looks like in the automotive world. Under Thomas's leadership, Kelly Moss created the Be Your Own Hero program, leveraging racing role models Ashley Freberg and Lonnie Unser to bring off-track motorsports education for young girls to on-track activations. Thomas says it's all about teaching future female racing drivers to stand up for themselves and push for their rightful place in the sport. At Kelly Moss, remarkable progress has been made in creating opportunities for women in motorsports. Among the 12 cars the team fields in the Porsche Spring Challenge, two are driven full-time by women, both earning podium finishes. Yet, Victoria Thomas's focus remains firmly on the future. Kelly Moss exemplifies Pittsburgh's spirit of innovation and excellence, showing that a local business can compete at the highest national levels while remaining deeply rooted in our community. Accepting the award tonight on behalf of Kelly Moss is Emily Garrett, Operations Director. Come on up. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, and the city of Pittsburgh. This is an incredible honor. I'm proud to accept this on behalf of the entire Kelly Moss team. As you mentioned, Kelly Moss truly is, excellence and innovation is in our DNA in everything that we do. I'm proud to be a part of the organization where we continue the conversation of diversity in motorsports and trying to inspire the next generation of motorsports enthusiasts. This really is and belongs to the whole Kelly Moss team, from the back of the shop to the team at the track and everyone behind the scenes. This is a tremendous honor. Thank you.
A staff award is for Deputy Fire Chief Chad Groson. During his tenure of more than 30 years, Deputy Chief Groson has carefully served in every role within the fire department, from fire inter to deputy chief, and has even stepped in twice as department interim fire chief. In each of the roles he has held, Deputy Chief Groson has carefully served as the citizen of Pittsburgh and provided a benchmark for others to follow. His dedication to both the fire department and the citizen of Pittsburgh is unparalleled, and he is a daily example to those who lead. Chief Groson, I'm going to call you Chief Groson because I have worked with him for the last year and a half, and I call him Chief. So, Chief Groson received multiple nominations for the staff award from his colleague. Those who submitted nominations say they have watched him attend budget and department head meetings as the interim fire chief, where he advocates for the fire department and works at an executive level, only to return to the firehouse and immediately set himself on task to support his entire team, so as a mowing the lawn, yes, he did that this summer, taking out garbage, cleaning bathrooms, or preparing and cleaning afterwards. Firehouse number one as a polling place during election. Deputy Chief Groson does all of these things without fanfare or atta boys and expects nothing in return. He does them because he values teamwork and believes that it is responsibility to embody the spirit of teamwork before he can expect the same from others that he leads. Through his action, he showed that the very first person he expects the best of is himself. From there, he holds the Pittsburgh Fire accountable to a standard that has become synonymous with the word "service excellence." Chief Groson received this award for more than 30 years of dedicated service and leadership in the Pittsburgh Fire Department. So, where are you, Chief?
Well, this was a definite surprise, and I want to thank the mayor, and I kind of, I'm sure it wasn't an easy task based on all the nominations that you got from city staff, because all of those are equally as deserving. So, I want to thank those that were also nominated. I also want to thank the council for the last year and a half allowing me to sit in front of you and share and advocate, like you used the word "advocate," what we need for the fire department to serve the citizens in this rapidly growing city. And I'm sure that come budget time, I wouldn't want to be in your seat because you have a lot of big decisions to make. So, thank you for allowing me to be in front of you and serve in that capacity. But I also want to recognize that we're in extremely capable hands now that we have Chief Sarver here with his leadership and his experience where he has come from. He will be right up here advocating for those needs in the future, too. So, I thank him every week for being here. So, thank you again, Chief. Next, I want to thank fellow city staff for helping me out over the last year and a half. And for some of us, we've been here, even when I went through this, was that 10 years ago, my first time around. So, thank you for your assistance and your guidance as we continue to serve the citizens of the city of Pittsburgh. First, my fire department family, you are a family. I look forward to coming and seeing you guys every day and serving with you guys. I can tell everybody in here that are citizens, in the council, mayor, fellow city staff, that you can ask for a more dedicated and professional team serving you on a day-in, day-out basis. So, thank you, it takes all of us. And then last but not least, my family. Yeah, raise your hands. My father, he's, let's see, it's 33 years for me, so that means that is 53 years for my father. He's been serving as a volunteer firefighter, that's how I got into this profession, or I was going to make cheese. But my dad, my mom, my sister, her daughter, my brother, my mother-in-law, and her significant other, my sister-in-law, my niece, and then my wife, Gina, and my daughter, Emma, and Gabe. I want to thank you for all that you've done for me. And there's been nights where I wasn't home, and there's a lot of times I wasn't there for holidays and other gatherings because of, well, you know, my commitment. And the one thing that I need to start doing is recommitting back to them. So, work-life balance, that's all I can say in anybody's profession. So, thank you, it's a great honor. Thank you very much, Mayor.
And finally, for our nonprofit award, Rooted. Rooted is a community-based organization working to build a more just and resilient local food system. From food access and urban agriculture to hands-on education, Rooted connects people of all ages to each other and to the land. At their Badger Rock campus, students learn gardening and cooking skills year-round, growing food in greenhouses, hoop houses, and outdoor farm spaces. Rooted also provides youth employment and leadership opportunities through its urban agriculture program, helping teens develop skills and advocate for food justice. Rooted strengthens the community through farm stands, community markets, monthly dinners, and a food pantry offering culturally meaningful foods. Their community gardens, serving more than 100 Pittsburgh families, create welcoming spaces to grow food, learn together, and build cross-cultural, multi-generational connections. Here this evening to accept the award, we have Ginny Hughes and Heidi Rudd, co-interim directors at Rooted. Please come forward.
Well, first let me acknowledge that this is not Ginny, it's Ginger. No, I'm just kidding. It's actually Sarah Carlson, she's our farmer. I want to thank you for coming, and I want you to say something, but first I also want to acknowledge that Deirdre Garten, I'm so excited because Deirdre is one of our board members at Rooted and has been for a long time, so this is really special. Rooted's been around for over 25 years, but only five as Rooted. You might know us, the Center for Resilient Cities or Community Groundworks. But we've been on the corner of Rimrock and Badger Road in the city of Madison, and we watched Pittsburgh grow up around us, and the sign was there one day, and here we are. I grew up in the Southdale neighborhood, which is now Pittsburgh, so I have a really special place in my heart for that neighborhood, and that's the neighborhood that we serve. Thanks also to Joe Maldonado, who's not here, who's one of our longtime folks who's participated and brought his family to Rooted events. But where the magic really lies is in the garden, and that's what Sarah does with our youth and with our families. So, I just wanted to give her a chance to talk about the lives that she's touched.
Or the lives that have touched me as well. So, it's an honor to receive this award, but even more, it's an honor to work with the youth and families, Pittsburgh families that we get the pleasure of working with every day. The word "serve families" is not quite right because I feel like we co-create and collaborate with families in everything that we do at Rooted, and just seeing young people come back year after year, people that we've known since fifth grade coming back as 24-year-olds, these kinds of things are what really are the heart of our work. It really is a relational work that we do rather than a transactional work that we do, and that is what makes it so special. So, thank you for the honor of this award, and we have the honor of working with Pittsburgh youth and families every day.
So, all the recipients, you come here, we can take the group picture. Can we take a five-minute recess?
I move to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
All those in favor of taking five-minute recess, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so I need a motion to reconvene the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor of reconvening the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So, next we are in the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So, next we move to the administrator report.
Can I make a motion to move some items around on the agenda?
Okay.
Could I move Resolution R 21025?
Which item number is?
B, sorry, 8B1.
A. Okay.
8P1.
Okay, this one, one second. A, what is the other one?
8P1.
Oh, this one.
And 11B1.
11B1, where is 11? Oh, this one, 11B1, move on. Okay.
I'll second.
Yeah, do now.
All those in favor of moving all this resolution up, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, so we are moving out, so what is the first? Oh, number 8B1, is Board of Public Works.
So, I move approval of Resolution R 21025, authorizing renewal of Flock Safety subscription.
Second.
Public Works deferred.
Finance deferred to council.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a couple of people that wish to speak, so I'm going to call them to the microphone. So, where are they? This one? Okay, so I will call Patrick Cheney. He wishes to speak in this matter.
Congratulations to our new alder. I'm Patrick Cheney, I'm in District 3. On this item, I am more opposed than neutral. Flock Safety Subscription, that's a bland, vague title. These are ALPR, Adult Automatic License Plate Reader Cameras, and a controversial subject. A woman at the mayor's District 4 Listening Session brought this up with her comments, and I hope she's here. I hesitated if I really wanted to get into this topic, but I did want to encourage the council to ask lots of good questions and get the details on these. As I said at an earlier meeting, I have great respect for our police department and Chief Morales, and confidence that they would not misuse this system. It has a bad reputation from abuse by others elsewhere. Can you think of any federal-level agencies in the news lately who might? Did you know that the police had these cameras? A little on the police department subscription. We seem to have two subscriptions, Public Works and the police department, so at least be efficient and get a deal on one subscription. For the police department, this is an additional tool they have for some good purpose, but it has a history of misreading plates, providing false evidence. Check dflock.me and YouTube videos. Would each of you like a camera on your street, logging you in and out of your neighborhood every time? This agenda item is for Public Works. Off the top, this is a losing proposal. Check the numbers for the previous four years to date. $4,333 loss in the red to date. Four years and only one covering its expense, but all the dollars go to the general fund, not Public Works, right? Public Works still has to handle getting rid of the illegally dumped items. The crew supervisor then has to go through the videos to find out who dumped it. Then the office staff have to write up a complaint letter with pictures, all at how many dollars per hour of their cost for their time? What is this Public Works camera really accomplishing, and what goal is this doing for $3,000 per year? If there is not at least one good, hard question from each of all nine of you on this council, this will be a very disappointing discussion. Thank you.
Patrick, next I call in Debbie Haidt. He wishes to speak. Not this one? What is eight? This one is, look like a B, or is it J? Okay, okay, don't worry. So, we have another person online, so Danielle St. Louis. Okay, go ahead, Danielle.
Hello, hi. My name is Danielle St. Louis. I've been a resident of Pittsburgh's Jamestown neighborhood for 12 years. Pittsburgh should not renew the contracts with Flock Safety Company due to Flock's inability to keep the data they're collecting secure. In the article "How a Misconfigured Demo Exposed Flock Safety's 83,000 Camera Nationwide Tracking System" by Joshua Michael, published July 15, 2025, on Nexanet, an all-source intelligence firm specializing in personal cybersecurity and privacy, the author details how he found Flock's Development Storybook demo indexed by Google, 5,000 lines of unprotected code, map keys, and UI components. Michael summarizes the issues this way. If a company whose entire business model is built on collecting and securing sensitive data can't even secure its own source code, search interface, or critical admin-level API keys, how can we possibly trust them with a nationwide database of our movements? But it's not just their software that's concerning. In the November 16, 2025 video, we hacked Flock's safety cameras in under 30 seconds. Ben Jordan, a data scientist and researcher, explains how by simply pushing a button on the back of the Flock camera, a hacker can turn one of the cameras into their own personal spy device, a malware host, or a honeypot that steals people's login credentials. He also goes through ways hackers can compromise the cameras without even having to touch them. Additionally, Jordan found that the cameras were not adhering to Flock's public statements concerning data storage. For example, Flock claims that data and footage is encrypted throughout its entire lifecycle. During Jordan's investigation of the devices, he didn't have to crack or decrypt any of the information, footage, or data. Everything was unencrypted. So for these reasons, I would ask the contracts with Flock not be renewed. Happy to answer any additional questions or provide any other examples.
Thank you. Okay, so I am closing the public comment.
Who is... Okay. I'll start it off. Thank you for the public comment. I appreciate people bringing this to my attention because I was not aware previously about the reputation that Flock has. I think the security concerns are certainly concerning. I think Tim from Public Works is here. Tim, can you talk about exactly how we utilize these cameras and what their function is and why we've selected this service in particular?
Absolutely. So Public Works utilizes this service at the drop-off site, which is at the Public Works Maintenance Facility off Fish Hatchery Road. So say someone comes in on a Saturday. It's an unmanned drop-off facility, so during, you know, working hours, our staff, Public Works staff, is going in and out of the facility. However, you know, after hours or on the weekend, the gates open, so anyone can come in and drop... Say if they drop off a mattress. We have a couple other cameras located throughout the facility that can pick up the actual action of the drop-off. So say a pickup truck were to pull into the site, drop off a mattress, we can see that action with the other cameras. Why the Flock camera was picked was we were having issues with those cameras on picking up the actual license plate. So in order to cite the person with the citation, we, you know, 10% of the time, we're only able to read the license plate, you know, either because of the angle the car was at or the placement of the existing cameras, the lighting, if it was dark out. So the city, back in 2022, decided to get this license plate reading technology, LPR, to read the actual license plate. So what we'll do is we'll look at the cameras, pick up the actual action of the illegal dumping, and then, once we get that vehicle, once the vehicle leaves out of the facility, the Flock camera can pick up the license plate so we can send a citation for whatever was illegally dumped at the site.
Thank you. We have a representative from Flock online, Trevor Chandler. Hi, Trevor.
Hello.
Hi. Do you want to make any comments?
Yes, I have a full presentation if you'd like. I want to respect the board's time. I do want to touch on a couple of the items that were brought up. I think there's some important misconceptions that were raised. First is that Flock has not been hacked. There are some TikTok and YouTube videos, as is often the case in this new era, where a camera that was out of the box was played with and pretended to show these vulnerabilities that were mentioned earlier. None of those vulnerabilities actually exist when it is connected to our network. So it's akin to taking an iPhone with factory settings and pointing out a lot of different things that are wrong with it before any of the encryption is actually there. And so we feel very confident about the security and encryption and protections that are based on our network. Only Fitchburg gets to decide who they share with. Flock makes absolutely no decisions on who to share with. You own 100% of your data, and I'm absolutely happy to answer any questions that the board might have or give a full presentation if the board would like.
How long is your presentation?
It could be... I could make it easily five minutes.
Yeah, because we have a long meeting tonight, so I wasn't expecting a presentation. So yes, you can do it. You can...
That's fine.
Okay. Brief, yes. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, I will... If I have the permissions, yes, I will share my screen, and this will address a lot of the myths and misconceptions that are out there as well. So again, Flock is a license plate reader technology. We also utilize a vehicle fingerprint technology. If someone attempts to obscure or use a stolen license plate, you can still utilize the Flock cameras to identify those vehicles as well. So a lot of folks are wondering about if the license plate is covered, can the system still work? And the answer is yes. So a little bit of Flock. We are a U.S. company. We are in over 6,000 communities now across the country, including many in Wisconsin. And so you definitely are not alone in Wisconsin in utilizing Flock. And I know there's always a lot of disagreements and concerns when it comes to public safety tech and balancing privacy and public safety, but the thing we can all agree on is that everyone deserves to feel safe, and that's what we very much value here at Flock. In fact, us and the ACLU regularly have come together to support common sense legislation that balances both public safety and privacy, like we did recently in Virginia. So this is not something we're new to, and we're constantly looking at making sure that you never have to sacrifice community safety for community values. And we have success story... I mean, every day we have success stories across the country, and we're really excited about the incredible successes that we've been able to assist law enforcement with across the... And departments of Public Works across Wisconsin and the greater area. So a couple myths, just so we can dive right into these. LPRs do not track everyone where they go. They have been found fully constitutional under the Fourth Amendment, universal, almost universal case law from the Supreme Court on down, stating that LPRs, license plate readers, are fully legal. There's... With any sort of public safety technology that provides evidence in courts, it's always going to be challenged. That's not unusual. What is unusual is the fact that courts across the country have almost unanimously upheld license plate readers under the Fourth Amendment. And I have plenty of case law. Again, I know you have a long night ahead of you. If you want to dive into case law, I'm happy to, but I'll skip over that for now. Flock does not sell customer data. That is not what we do. We are not a social media company. We don't sell intel... We don't sell data for advertising or anything like that. All data, by default, is actually deleted after 30 days. We are the... One of the companies that spearheaded this, that you don't need to collect constant huge amounts of data. Whatever isn't used for an investigation is deleted after 30 days. And there's also a myth out there that Flock's private customers, maybe retail agencies, retail customers that utilize Flock somehow have access to government data, and that's simply not the case either. So a private customer, whether it's an HOA or a retail customer, can choose to share their cameras with law enforcement. So if a wanted vehicle passes in front of their cameras, law enforcement gets an alert, but the private customers will never have access to those alerts or any criminal justice data. We do not use facial recognition on these LPR cameras, so that is simply not something that we utilize. And another important aspect is that Flock's LPR system and LPR cameras do not collect personally identifiable information. All the Flock system collects are pictures of the rear of vehicles to get the best image of a license plate and the characteristics of a vehicle. Our system is not... Our LPR system is not connected to the DMV. There's no social security numbers. It doesn't even tell you who owns the car. All it tells you is the license plate and the vehicle characteristics on that vehicle. So there is no PII in there. So we... But regardless of the fact that there is no PII in our license plate reader system, we still protect it as if it is PII with some of the highest levels of encryption and protections that are out there. And you know, there's a lot of, you know, myths out there about LPR cameras and public safety technology impacting communities of color. We're actually very proud of the partnerships we've built and the conversations we've engaged in to address this, and we were actually endorsed by the Oakland, California chapter, the historic Oakland, California chapter of the Oakland NAACP, because they have recognized that it actually reduces bias in policing while also increasing safety in vulnerable communities. And we're very proud of the partnerships and the data points there that show that we're actually reducing bias in policing. And there's some folks that will say LPRs don't have an impact on crime. We're really proud. Both Mayor Todd Gloria has attributed a 20% decline in auto theft to Flock. San Francisco Mayor Daniel Lurie has credited Flock for a 41% decrease, and we've also found that Flock's been used to solve 30% of homicides in both Oakland and San Diego. So there are a significant number of data points about the effectiveness of license plate readers. And again, you heard about encryption and safety, something we take extremely seriously, and we protect privacy by design. And here, the most important one we have on there is the FBI Criminal Justice Information Services. So we are certified by the federal government to handle sensitive information. We are NDAA certified. We have some of the highest level of encryption certifications out there that ensure that all of our systems are up to date and fully compliant and able to hold sensitive information. And we also have a transparency portal that if Fitchburg chose to do this, we'd be happy to provide this free of charge so that your community knows exactly how your license plate reader cameras are being used. You can show who you're sharing with, if you share at all. This is a service that we provide free of charge. And we have some additional compliance features that we have here, including no federal access to nationwide or statewide lookup. Only you get to choose who you share. We have search filters we're happy to put in place for you to make sure that community safety never comes at the cost of community values. We have top-of-the-line auditing, including proactive auditing coming soon, as well as a full audit and transparency, permanent transparency log. From the minute you start using these cameras, every keystroke is logged so that you can know how... Make sure that your system is being used the way it's intended to be used by your communities. And again, we're just very proud to have built strong relationships to impact safety across the country. We're fully endorsed by NCC, the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, which runs the country's Amber Alert program. We've... They've credited us with finding at least 100 missing children just by press reports alone. Flock has been credited with helping find over 1,000 missing persons. Mothers Against Drunk Driving has found that Flock is an instrumental tool in identifying and stopping drunk drivers and hit-and-runs, and again, endorsed by the Oakland NAACP. So I appreciate that. I rushed through that, but again, I respect your time, and I want to be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. So, okay, so now I open to the council.
Micah, and then Jake.
Yeah, I don't want to get into a back and forth with anyone about this, but I'm going to say a couple things just to respond to that. I'm going to start by acknowledging that these tools do have value to the Fitchburg PD. Like, I believe that crimes have been solved. I believe that cars have been tracked, and we have recovered stolen cars. We have solved crimes with these. There are value to our police department, especially our police department, who we value and respect and know comes to this with integrity, that there is value there. The idea that we own our own data in this case is just not true. Our... The default contract that we have with Flock grants Flock Safety a perpetual, irrevocable, worldwide, royalty-free, fully paid license to use, reproduce, modify, and distribute all of our data as part of their aggregated data network. In addition, the claim that our data is deleted after 30 days is incomplete. The images are deleted after 30 days, but all of the data associated with those images, including the location, the timestamp, every... All of the metadata associated with those images is saved and logged into the database and then can be searched by Flock's partners. So we alone in the last year have had 6.7 million hits to the Fitchburg data source from 292 law enforcement agencies. Verona recently terminated their contract with Flock. I would encourage everyone on this council and the public to view their November 10 meeting. It was a good discussion. The council, the public comment, the Verona Police Department did a presentation on how they use this, which was really helpful, and the discussion among the alders, it was all really valuable. It was worth watching. What we need to... I guess I would also say that in addition to that, Flock has recently claimed that they are turning off access to federal agencies. There are... There were thousands of hits on Verona's data from federal agencies, including things labeled "federal" and "ICE" within the last year. We can... I can get aggregate data from them. What we need to get, and we still haven't gotten, and I am looking to get in the future, is the raw audit data that Verona received from their police department around who is fully accessing our data, who is running searches on it, and what is, you know, what is going on with that. So it's possible when we receive that data, we might end up having separate discussions around the police department cameras versus the Public Works cameras. I think that's probably two different kind of lanes we can go down, and that's kind of two separate discussions. But I would still like to see all of that data before we make a decision on this. So I would... I'm probably going to let people ask questions. I'll probably propose that we maybe defer this for two weeks so that I can get that data, and we can look at it and analyze it, but I'm going to let other people speak or ask questions.
Okay, who's next? Oh, Jake, and then Bill.
If you all receive a federal subpoena that said, "We want you to let us know if you've seen this license plate on any Flock cameras in the state of Wisconsin for such-and-such time period," how do you all comply with that?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. So it's specifically in our contract if we receive a federal warrant or subpoena or your data, which you do own 100%, and I'm happy to dive into the aggregated data clause. But if we receive that, we are contractually obligated to alert you and let you know so you can respond to that. Again, if we ever receive anything like that, we make clear we do not own the data, that this is Fitchburg's data, and we direct them to your... We direct them to your city's legal representative so that your city can respond to that warrant or subpoena.
Thank you.
Bill? What? Are you going to speak too? Okay.
Yeah. So Trevor, in your presentation, you said that the cameras are designed to detect only vehicles associated with a crime. How would you know that they're associated with a crime? How can you detect only vehicles associated with a crime?
Great question. Thank you for that. So your law enforcement maintains a hot list, and so these are vehicles that are wanted in your area for any particular reason, whether it's illegal dumping or a missing person. And so when that vehicle passes by one of these cameras, your law enforcement will only get an alert to those vehicles that are associated with a crime by that they've put onto that hot list.
Well, I mean, it's detecting every vehicle, and it's got the ability to filter to just the ones we're looking for, but there's nothing that says it's not recording and retaining information on all the vehicles, right?
Yes. So the way... I believe your Fitchburg retention is 30 days, and so that all the images of the vehicles in front of the cameras, motion-activated, will be retained for 30 days and then hard-deleted, including metadata is also hard-deleted after 30 days. And so, once that is done, over that 30 days, if, say... Because all crime sometimes doesn't get reported until a week out or a week after. So if someone goes on vacation, only realizes their vehicle was stolen a week after they return home to see their garage empty... Yes. So the way, I believe your Pittsburgh's retention is 30 days. And so uh that, all the, all the images that, of the vehicles in front of the cameras, motion activated, uh, will be retained for 30 days and then hard deleted, including metadata is also hard deleted after 30 days. And so uh, once that is done, um, over that 30 days, uh, if, say, because all crime sometimes doesn't get reported until a week out or a week after. Um, so if someone goes on vacation, only realizes their vehicle was stolen a, a week after they return home to see their garage empty, uh, that will allow your law enforcement to utilize these cameras also in an investigatory manner, um, as long as it's within that 30-day period.
And, and the data is kept where? Our servers, your servers, both?
So we use AWS GovCloud, which is FedRAMP certified, uh, which also has, again, the CIGIS encryption, um, uh, status in there as well.
What is that? I don't know.
Uh, CIGIS is criminal justice, uh, CIGIS.
Okay.
Amazon Web Services.
Oh, sorry. A- Amazon Web Services GovCloud. Yes.
Okay, okay.
One, one more question. How are you able to provide? So we were provided with the previous year's data and Verona was provided with their previous year's data, including every individual search on it. How are you able to provide a year's worth of data searches with, when all of it is deleted after 30 days?
So while the data is deleted after 30 days, the audit logs are permanent. And that's something that sets Flock apart. From the very first time uh anyone does a search in the Flock system, uh, that search is logged. So the data is deleted, but any search uh including the username, the reason they put in there is preserved permanently so that you can audit it the, for the entirety of your system.
Okay, Gabriela?
Okay, so I just want to constrain this conversation a little bit because we have Flock cameras for the police department. This resolution, to clarify, is just in regards to the Flock camera that we use as a license plate reader for the recycling drop-off center. Is that correct?
Yes.
When are the contracts up for the police cameras?
Uh, two of the subscriptions are up at the end of February next year and the other two are June of 2027.
Yeah. So I think these are relevant. This is a relevant conversation. Like, absolutely. I did just want to like bring it back to the recycling cameras. And the reason why I say that is because I remember when we bought this camera four years ago, and I remember asking, are we actually going to make this money back? Because I think we spent like $15,000 on this camera, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. That was what's in my head. I'm usually pretty good with those numbers. But anyway, it was expensive, plus there's a subscription. We obviously don't give out very many citations. I don't know if that's because it's a lot of staff work to give out a citation or, or if, for whatever reason we don't. We haven't even made back the money uh in the citations on, on the subscription that we pay annually, which seems pretty wild to me. And that was what I was, my fear was. Is there a reason why our citation is only $187? Because I assume it costs us more than that to ha, to deal with an illegal dumping situation. Does anyone know?
Chad, could you, do you have the answer?
Yeah. Uh, so the common council sets citation range. Uh, obviously, if the common council would like to increase the cost for dumping at the uh drop-off site, you certainly have the prerogative to do so uh in order to better capture not only the cost of uh the technology at play, but also the cost of staff time to assess complaints uh that are either made to them directly or that they observe uh by themselves. Uh, and if, if I may, just add some additional uh history that I added uh at the finance committee. Is that all right, Mayor?
Yes.
There was an evolution uh that got us to this point. And I think that's important to note that uh the city uh drop-off site on Fish Atrey Road is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, uh, which means that uh the majority of the time in which it is open, there is not staff coming in and out of that uh facility. And therefore, uh, city staff was noticing uh a notable amount of uh items being deposited there that did not belong there. And there's also, uh, quite honestly, a strong belief uh from city staff that there are non-residents and/or contractors who are using this site to drop off materials. And uh, that quite frankly, is costing our refuse and recycling rate payers probably a bit more money than it may need to because of the additional material, even that is accepted there that is being dropped off at that particular site. Uh, we attempted to use video surveillance solely for a number of years there to try to uh provide some measure of deterrence and also give city staff the ability to research violations and uh issue citations. Unfortunately, despite our attempts uh with video uh technology of the time, uh, including higher resolution cameras, day-night cameras, uh, we simply were unable to get enough uh, a clear enough read of license plates and vehicles at that site in order to go ahead and proceed with any sort of enforcement action. Uh, so the only solution uh that has been found to be successful, that does allow staff the ability to use both video surveillance and LPR technology, is an LPR camera at the site. And we even went so as far as to install uh speed bumps at that site in order to slow vehicles down to try to use conventional video surveillance to grab license plates. And uh, we're unsuccessful in that. I would say that uh LPR technology is helpful in allowing city staff to piece uh together violations. I recognize that the citations that are issued do not equate to the cost of the, the uh subscription software. However, I would also offer that when an item that is prohibited at the site is dropped off, uh, let's just use a mattress or a refrigerator, for example, uh, it does take staff time to remove that item from the site. Uh, they are likely transporting it to the landfill. Uh, they are paying a separate disposal fee for that particular item. Uh, and I would assume that it takes at least one, if not in some cases, multiple staff members, uh, whether it's to simply load a piece of equipment or material onto a truck, uh, or to ultimately take and unload it. Uh, but I would suspect that we're probably uh well into the 90-minute range by the time they load something, haul it to the landfill, and return back to the city. So clearly, there is a cost, not only in monetary value to that, but also to um the work that the Public Works Department is doing. It's taking them away from other sorts of activities. Um, I, I will say that um if the city continues to elect to employ LPR technology, I would offer that perhaps in addition to, to the signage, I think that we already have down there about video surveillance, that perhaps as an added deterrent, uh, we add that LPR technology is also in use there uh to further dissuade uh non-residents and business contractors from using the site. Of course, there's also staff time associated with cleanup of, of appropriately uh dumped materials there as well. And while we can't necessarily quantify how much of that is not coming from our residential customers uh here in Pittsburgh, uh, I can certainly uh appreciate that at least some of that material is also having to be moved uh by city staff. Uh, so I think, I, I think this is a complicated matter, uh, for sure. I recognize uh the concerns associated with our community and our, our common council to ensure that uh the technology in place is used appropriately. Uh, the city does have policies in place uh that if city staff were to use technology in an inappropriate manner, uh, they would be held accountable for that. And uh, in looking at the city's overall policy, uh, we'll probably look to even strengthen that further uh in an upcoming Personnel Committee meeting uh to ensure it's clear uh what uh, what behaviors uh would be inappropriate uh to, to leave no uh benefit of uh confusion there.
Sorry to jump back in. The, if I recall the original conversation from four years ago, the, what was proposed was that we would send citations to people that weren't Pittsburgh residents as well as like legal. It wasn't just for illegal dumping. And so it was meant to be like, let's constrain this down. Obviously, we don't use it like that because it's probably too complicated to administer. But like, if we didn't have the camera and we didn't pay the subscription, we would still incur all of the costs of, of removing the illegally dumped things to the landfill, and we wouldn't have paid $15,000 for the camera and $3,000 a year for the service. So just like from a pure like financial standpoint, like we're incurring all the costs and we're not even making back the money it costs us to do the citations. Plus, you have the extra work of doing the citations, which is like another administrative burden. So it's like, unless we, we either increase the citation costs significantly, or we, we shouldn't do this. It's like, it's just a waste of money. And as I feel like the, the security concerns are relevant for our police discussions, but in the, in terms of this narrow use of this camera, I don't think it's working. I don't think it's, it's not saving the taxpayers any money. If anything, it's more expensive to try to do citations than it is to just not do it at all.
I.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Let it.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I, I've been dealing with this for, forever. And you talk to Mark Hoddle or those guys, it's very disheartening to go down there on Monday morning and people are dropping off big brush that's mixed in with our, our leaves and yard waste and they have to pick that out. And it, it, it just ruins the, almost ruins the morale of our, of our, of our department. And at least now we can, you know, we can, we can capture those people and, um, and send them the, you know, send them a citation. I agree with you, Gabriella. Should be at least $500 if not more. And Chad's point about block camera in place, what, what we, what gets missed here though, you know, if you're looking plain dollars and cents is the deterrent that this provides. The stuff is getting dropped off, but I think there's a lot more that doesn't because we have the, have the camera. I'm disappointed we're not using it to send citations to people from Madison or other cities, but um, you know, we're not, we're really not set up to, to do that. We, if we can stop the illegal dumping of either brush or, or other things, I, I think it's worth it. And back, back to uh, back to the initial discussion though, we were concerned about that. I know all of you have one of these. And you are tracked wherever you're, you're going with one of, with one of these. So don't uh, you know, the, the, the discussion about, you know, your privacy and everything. You choose to have, have a phone, um, I hate to tell you, but they can, they can track you wherever you've been, far more than the flock readers. That's, that's all I wanted to say.
So I, I guess to respond to that is, I choose to have a phone in my pocket. I don't choose to have a camera mounted on a light pole next to my house. And so phones are opt-in and these cameras are not opt-in or opt-out. I can't opt in to having my picture taken when I drive by one and I can't opt out of having my picture taken when I drive by one. And so like, I consider that a difference. But just to get back to the drop-off site, I, I completely agree in terms of just the cost benefit of it. I think there's a deterrent, but there are already cameras there that aren't this camera. So, I mean, if we took this camera away, there would still be cameras, there would still be signs saying you are being video recorded. I mean, that's the deterrent. I don't think the deterrent is like one guy getting a citation and then like going to his friends and saying, you guys can't go drop stuff off at the drop-off site anymore. Like, the deterrent is that there is a camera there. In addition, I would say there are other LPR readers that don't have the concerns that Flock has. Um, that I, from a cursory search are the same amount of money or less. Um, and just to be perfectly honest, I have concerns about the data sharing. I have concerns about that, um, how they are handling these, these searches. And we want the recycling drop-off site to just be someplace that anyone in the city can go. And residents aren't comfortable with these cameras, whether or not, whatever we decide on them, residents are not comfortable with them. And we shouldn't make one of the city sites where we are telling people, come, come here and drop your stuff off, a place where they're not comfortable coming in because of this. So that's.
I, I have a question for Tim. Um, how many citation we have, um, we have done this year, you know, how many? How, I, I am curious. So how many people we are, you know, they are getting the citation because they are illegally dumping or they are from other municipality using our, do, do we have that data?
So that this year in 2025, so far, we've issued 10 citations.
10.
And most of them have been for, it looks like illegal dumping. Looks like uh, there's been a, a mattress, a beanbag, freezer, boards.
Okay.
Uh, garbage dump, some more boards, some more garbage, a wood dump. So it's mainly for the, the illegal dumping. I, I do know, you know, during working hours, when the guys are coming in and out of that facility, they, they do go up and mention to, they do see landscapers, hey, you can't be dumping here, that, that sort of thing. But yeah, for us to monitor that, that, that's a highly administrative task because, like I said, the, you know, we have to watch the other cameras first to see the act. So it would be really someone monitoring all the um hours, you know, when we're not our normal business hours. It would be someone watching the video of that, that time to see the actual act being done. And then, you know, I guess picking up the, watching the flock camera to get the license plate.
Okay. Uh, Logan and then Bill. No, yeah, no, Bill. Yeah.
I'm gonna start, excuse me, um, with a question not directly related to the cameras, but I just want to back out and say, why do we have the facility open 24/7 to begin with? And this is just a new alder, you know, new alder question. Why don't we just have it open sunrise to sunset or Monday through Friday and then, you know, Saturday mornings or something? Um, because then if there's a gate in front of it, I don't know if somebody's going to climb a gate with a freezer to illegally dump it. I sure hope not.
I think to date, the common council's uh policy decision has been to maintain 24/7 access. Certainly, the council has the ability to uh further restrict that. Uh, clearly, that would be an inconvenience to uh the site users, but certainly would probably uh diminish uh the either illegal dumping and/or the uh non-resident contractor dumping that is uh taking place. Uh, there clearly would be a cost to fence the entire site. Uh, some of it has been fenced. Uh, we could, you know, pursue closing it at certain times. Uh, the common council could choose to implement a, a permitted system and have somebody check during the hours of operation. Again, uh, there would be a significant inconvenience to folks uh who are enjoying its use lawfully uh at any time of day or uh any day of the week. And ultimately, the common uh council has the, the authority to, to decide what uh if any hours, there's a drop-off site, you know. Nothing also says that the city has to provide a drop-off site. I recognize that would not be very popular with our residents. Um, but absent the ability to, one, uh, provide some measure of deterrence in the, without having it staffed when it's open uh physically, uh, without a measure of, of deterrence uh through the use of uh both video and LPR technology, uh, we certainly need to pursue a change in operating practices there.
But I think if we, you know, we have the, the library, the senior center, they have hour of operation, you know, and people respect those hours.
The, the drop-off site does as well. I'm, I'm reading it off of our website right now. It says the Pittsburgh recycling drop-off site is open to city of Pittsburgh residents only. That part is in bold. During daylight hours only. That part is also in bold.
Yeah.
So it's, I think it's accessible. There's nothing preventing someone from going there, but it's not officially open. Do we have those hours posted at the drop-off site, Tim?
I, I don't recall. I, I do know there's a, a sign coming in to the facility. I, I don't recall what's all on, on it.
There was some analysis done on this through the RCC a couple of years ago. I can't, I can't recall exactly, but there was a report. We had a long discussion about it. In the end, we decided to move forward with it because it is fairly expensive. We actually added dumpsters for cardboard because it was so overused. And it would, the, the final decision at that point was, this is enough of a value of our citizens and it's a low enough cost that it's worth continuing to provide it. Um, but I don't know. I did, there's the, I, I understand like theoretically the value of, of issuing citations, but it just seems so silly to me that we're not actually even making back the money that we're spending. And this is just, it just, it feels ridiculous to me. So.
Okay. Uh, who is? Oh, no. Bill first.
Yeah. So we've got in the referral sheet, statistics on the number of uh citations issued by year, starting in 2022, which is when the camera went up. Do we have um any data from before that to see what sort of a deterrent effect this system actually has had in practice?
I could take a look in the, the folder. So 22, 21. Looks like 12 and 21. 15 and 20. Maybe eight, 18 in, looks like in 19. Maybe 17 and 18, it looks like, just by quick glance.
So I think 2024 being a bit of an outlier with 19 citations, the numbers have come down somewhat, but I don't know if we want to call that a huge success or not. I, I don't know what the impact is, you know, having between four and 10 in a year versus 15 to 18 in a year. Um, that, that's something I guess the Public Works Department can comment on. That, that's something I guess the public works department can comment on.
Okay, who's next? Uh, Logan.
So again, I'll try to keep this to the, the public works camera on here. Um, but I need to start with the police department side of things here. Um, earlier today, I got a copy of, uh, Pittsburgh Police Department Policy 427 related to the ALPR Automated License Plate Reader Technology. Does that same policy then apply to Public Works's instance of using that camera? Are we following the same policies or using the same license? And if not, do we have a policy other than our usual, we can't use city technology for evil policy, um, specifically regulating the uses and the number of people who have access to this and the cases in which they can use it? That is as clearly delineated as the police department policy, which I will just say I have some questions and concerns about, but we'll save that for another time.
Uh, other city staff, non-police department staff would follow under the city's technology use policy, uh, which we do believe is adequate uh, to address a violation, if you will, of, uh, of protocols associated with the use of this technology or any other technology. However, as I mentioned, uh, earlier in, uh, comments, we do believe that it could be, uh, further enhanced to be more, uh, explicit on, uh, some of the behaviors that would be, uh, determined to be inappropriate. And we'll be bringing a forthcoming update.
Uh, who? Oh, uh, okay, Joe, go ahead. We cannot hear you. Joe. Yeah, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanna, um, echo some of Alder Ladase's comments, um, regarding the, um, integrity of the technology itself. And also echo drawing the attention to the Verona City Council meeting. Um, one of the things that they made it really clear in the way that they framed it was that it's not an issue of, um, staff themselves or the, for instance, the police department in Verona itself, but the, the company and some of the, uh, violations that it's concerned, that it's, that have been brought up. Um, and I want to echo those, um, statements, you know, with regard to our city. I don't, um, see any reasons to doubt the integrity of our city staff and how they use this technology. Um, I'm concerned with the, uh, technology itself. And Alder Ladase kind of brought up some of the, um, you know, pieces of the contract and how, you know, data is, is, um, stored and kept. Um, so I just wanted to make that point, uh, and reemphasize it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, who's next? Um, Logan, and then we are closing, okay? Yeah, because, okay, okay.
They're, they're both pretty quick. Um, do we require both the police department and public works to use multi-factor authentication when using this technology? As far as I'm aware, Flock does not require that, um, or does not require it of older clients or customers, but now does for newer, um, instances?
Uh, our IT department has all of our, uh, computers, uh, set up with multi-factor authentication just to log in to their computer, period.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so you would at least have to use multi-factor authentication just to log into your computer. Uh, I can't speak to what the login requirements are for, uh, Flock's, uh, application specifically, uh, but I can at least, uh, comment on the overall, uh, use of multi-factor authentication.
Okay. I'll just say I'd like to see some multi-factor authentication specifically for that because you could just, you know, open up your computer and go to the bathroom and somebody else, you know, again, I have no reason to doubt our city staff, but for technology this powerful, it warrants additional safeguards above and beyond, um, typical IT policy. Um, and then my other question was if we decide to move away from these cameras, um, to, some of the points have been raised about recouping our costs. If we spent $15,000 on this camera four or five years ago, are we able to resell it to another municipality that may want it for whatever reason, recoup some of that cost? Um, you know, like we would with any other surplus goods? As long as, of course, we make sure it goes to a reputable person. We're not selling to somebody on the dark web or what have you?
I don't know the answer to that question, and I would also need to research exactly what was spent, uh, at that time. What does, uh, approximately $15,000 was utilized for? There could have been electrical work that was needed. Uh, maybe there was also other video surveillance camera enhancements that were done, uh, as part of this, uh, particular, uh, installation. So I, I would have to do some research in order to determine exactly what, uh, was done when this camera was added.
Okay, um, Dave.
I'll be very brief, um, very brief. Uh, Mike, I think you're overstating that the whole city is against these. I, I don't, I don't believe that's the case. Second, I would encourage all of you to talk to, to Chief Morales. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a, uh, law enforcement professional, but I value, value his opinion. So that's all I wanted to say.
Do you want to clarify what you say, Michael, or no?
No, it's fine. We can, um, we can clarify that. I didn't, I, I didn't say the whole city was against this, but there are many residents that are concerned about this that have reached out. And it's one thing to have a camera that the police department is using for a specific purpose. It's another thing to put it at a site that we as a city encourage everyone to come to, I guess, was my point.
Uh, okay. So, so, uh, so are you ready to vote, uh, on this? Or, or do you need more information?
I, for me, I'll just do my, yeah. I, I don't think it makes sense financially. Like, I, I think the security questions still stand, and we should have that conversation when we get to the police station, um, the ones that the police uses around the city.
Mm-hmm.
But this doesn't make any sense from a financial perspective, in my opinion. So like, the security questions, like, they matter, but they're not, they're almost like next to the point that this doesn't make sense financially, in my opinion.
The, I, I agree. The, I, I'm going to keep, continue to gather the data that we need to have a discussion around the police department cameras, but I, I don't think, I'm, I'm going to be a no on this regardless of what that data says. I've gotten aggregate data, and I don't want to see aggregated data from a camera that we have at a public works site used in any sort of nationwide search. Um, and again, and then the financial situation doesn't make sense either, so.
Okay, the others, okay. Okay, but my question is, okay, so if you're okay, you don't want this, um, technology in that, in the drop site, then we need to have another discussion maybe in the future, what we're gonna do with the drop site, what, you know?
We should probably be a committee of the whole topic, I think.
We need to determine what we're gonna do with the, with the site because how we're gonna, uh, you know, track illegal dumping. So, so that one is, is this an open, you know? We need to continue this discussion about what we're gonna do with the site.
Agreed.
Okay, so that's it. This is what I'm putting there, so you know what are the consequences of a no vote here. Okay? Okay, um, so, um, so we are ready, so we, I said, all of us in favor of this resolution?
You can do a roll call.
You roll call, okay. Alder Hertz has requested a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.?
Nay.
Alder Gerhart?
Nay.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Jetzer?
Nay.
Alder Ladase?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
He's nay.
Huh?
He's nay.
Nay? Okay, I didn't hear. Okay.
Alder Regston? Alder Maldonado is motioning that he is voting no. Alder Regston?
Nay.
Alder Lepper?
Nay.
Motion failed.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Trevor, for coming to the meeting. I appreciate your comment. Okay, so now we make another change. Okay, okay, where, uh, which one is? What is, um, oh, okay. Okay, so we are in community and equity committee. Okay, Donna.
Oops, nope, that's the one for that one. Ah, yes, here. So this was a resolution, uh, R-207-25, and it is basically a resolution calling for land acknowledgement at city ribbon cut, city ribbon cutting ceremonies throughout the city of Pittsburgh. And this was introduced by Alders Jetzer and Maldonado. And the, when this, uh, when it was referred to the Community Equity Advisory Committee, um, it was approved.
Okay, um, thank you.
I'll move approval.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, uh, couple of people, no, this one isn't here, isn't it? No. We have a, uh, okay, one second, I am looking at this form. Um, yeah, we have Christopher Pejero, sorry. So he wishes to speak in support. I am just looking for the number.
Um, off topic, I really appreciate the discussion, uh, the prior discussion before I came up here. I have lots of concerns myself as a Latino man who was recently targeted by a hate group this summer and our fascination with ICE taking folks that look like me without proper due diligence. So that's for another conversation, but once you all get to the conversation, uh, further conversation, I would love to have that come to the equity committee in consideration. So back on the topic at hand, uh, thank you, Alder Aratafrata, I mean, sorry, Mayor Aratafrata and Alders. Um, I appreciate, uh, your time tonight. Um, I did want to speak on behalf of supporting the resolution and wanted to also note that, uh, the resolution passed unanimously by our new equity committee, uh, to bring forward to you tonight. A little bit about my background, I am Menominee on my mother's side, um, and also indigenous on my father's side. Uh, this piece is from the region that my, my family's from in Mexico. Um, I'm also, as you know, the chair of the equity committee and, uh, do many things, uh, around, um, uh, our public, um, processes. Mayor, uh, Aratafrata, I also wanted to acknowledge your wonderful statements last night. You made a, uh, land acknowledgement at the ribbon cutting for the hub and was a, a perfect example of what I'd like to see as, as commonplace for us as a municipality. Um, I'm excited that this was our first action as an equity committee and that it passed unanimously. Um, it's been, um, I've been part of many processes to establish, uh, land acknowledgements, but also recognize that land acknowledgements, uh, can be, um, empty gestures without action. And I did want to point out some unique aspects of this resolution that, uh, call for action. Um, number one, again, this, this, uh, recognizes the Ho-Chunk Nation as the original stewards of the land since time immemorial. And also that the Ho-Chunk and indigenous people are important parts of our community in Pittsburgh currently and are in the future. And that we are, uh, we're people of the present, not, uh, museum pieces of the past. I think that's an important part of this, uh, ordinance or this resolution. And most importantly, a call to action within this resolution for working with the Ho-Chunk Nation in consideration of future policies and, and work that the city of, um, uh, Pittsburgh does, um, in, in coordination with them, their consideration. Uh, two amendments I would, I'm gonna throw out there, uh, in, in lieu of a larger discussion, but maybe adding some language that also recognizes the 12 other tribes in Wisconsin. Um, number one, and the second, um, add that, um, uh, indigenous endorsed resources for further education of our collective history because oftentimes we, uh, whitewash our indigenous history as well. And so it's important that as we acknowledge the land, we also recognize our full history. And in honor of, uh, indigenous history or Heritage Month, um, that's another reason why I bring that to the table. I did want to thank you for your consideration, and I hope that you do pass this resolution. I'm very proud of our work as a, an equity committee, and I'm proud of the work that you do collectively. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, any other comments, question? And Logan? Oh, and Joe, okay.
Alder Maldonado, why don't you go first?
Okay.
Sorry, while I navigate this technology. Um, so I just wanna say that I fully, uh, uh, you know, endorse this resolution as a co-sponsor. Um, I go, what Christopher said is that oftentimes land acknowledgements kind of become, uh, a place and, um, not connected to meaningful actions. And, um, I think this is a good, the other thing that I hope that this encourages is relationship building with, um, the people of the Ho-Chunk Nation. Um, I just wanna thank Christopher for engaging, um, with Brian Greendeer. Um, he had spoken at one of the Parks Commission's meetings. Um, I think when you, uh, have somebody, which I would consider a dignitary, um, in a sovereign nation, um, present and giving up the, of their time, um, it's important that we recognize that, uh, the indigenous people of this land were here first and that the practices that they, um, have had for thousands of years are things that we can learn from and we can also contribute to. Um, also wanted to acknowledge that, you know, we have a, a, a resident who is no longer with us, um, from the Menominee Nation, was, was a Pittsburgh resident, uh, Ms. Ada Dear, who was a, you know, huge pioneer in, um, indigenous sovereignty. And, um, you know, even to the point of being, being, um, appointed to the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Um, we have a lot of talent in this community and we have a lot of wisdom in this community. So, um, I think having, um, this first step is gonna be incredibly important in, um, recognizing that we are on indigenous land. Um, and, you know, oftentimes we have discussions at the city about longtime Pittsburgh residents, but before there was a Pittsburgh, um, this was day joke. And, um, it's really incredibly important to acknowledge that and continue to, um, speak the name of, of living people, um, you know, who are stewards of this land. Um, so I just wanted to leave it at that before, um, opening up for discussion.
Thank you, uh, Logan.
I have one comment, one question. I'll be brief. My comment is, Christopher, I appreciate you, uh, kind of answering some of the why we're doing this, um, why it's not performative and how it's specifically crafted in a way to be more meaningful, recognizing past, present, future, and a call to action. Um, and I would hope that as we draft, um, this acknowledgement and if we move forward with this, that we have some sort of template for folks to work off of so that, um, we have, we, that these land acknowledgements at these ceremonies meet the goals of the resolution before us. Um, and I would also be willing to, uh, put forth an amendment, if we wanted to do so, um, to the first whereas clause, um, to add the indigenous people who have resided in this region since time immemorial and one of the 12 tribal nations of Wisconsin. Um, I don't know, I will not claim to be an expert in this. We, there's either, we could do 11 federally recognized and state recognized, but that would leave out the brother town. Um, so I'd be also willing to, uh, to wordsmith some of that. Um, but if that is something that there'd be desire for, I, I would certainly be okay with that.
I have a question about that because the resolution obviously has language that could be used in a land acknowledgement, but I don't know that the way this is written means that you have to use that exact language.
Yeah, yeah.
We're just saying that we're gonna do this. That language could be used, that language can be edited. I don't think there's anything in the resolution that indicates that we can't make changes to it. So I just don't know that we need to figure out the wording right this second because that's, there's a, there's complications to that. And maybe the equity committee wants to submit some, some changes to what we typically use, but I don't think it's necessary.
No, it's not, yeah, I don't think so.
If I need to formally withdraw, um, I can do that.
It wasn't a second, so don't worry. Okay, so, yeah, Dave.
Um, I, I feel this belongs with our historical society or landmarks, uh, landmark conservation, you know, to identify, I don't know if we've identified archaeological sites here, but I, I'm a little uncomfortable, you know, that I realize the Ho-Chunk were the original stewards here, but we've had many other groups. It's part of our, part of our history to put one above the other. I feel every, every cultural group, it's their responsibility to maintain their, their culture or their, their history. And, you know, whether it's the, uh, you know, the Irish, uh, the, the Italia Fest we have here, um, you know, certainly the, the significant, uh, have here, um, you know, certainly the, the significant contributions that Hispanics have made in our, in our cities last, you know, last 20 years. I, I think, I, I'm a little uncomfortable picking one and, and saying, saying, you know, we're, we're putting you above the others. I, I, I feel there's a lot that could be done with the historical society, but I, I believe it's the, you know, the Ho-Chunk people, that's their responsibility. You shouldn't be asking the city to take this on, we'll, we'll support it, but that's their, you know, the Ho-Chunk in addition to being a people is a, is a commercial enterprise. You know, you can't turn the TV on without seeing their ads or, you know, and, and they're a commercial enterprise too. And I, I think they have the, they have the, um, the resources, you know, to, to promote this without, without the city spending taxpayer money, I guess, is where I'm coming down.
Well, we are not spending any taxpayer money in this, doing this, okay? So I want to clarify that. It's only a recognition. I don't think that, you know, I mean.
We got to stop there, probably. We won't, we won't be spending resources.
For what?
On, on various things, you know, this is, seems like this is kind of growing.
Is, you know what it is, Dave? This is what we do, uh, it went, like we did last night, you know, when I, my, my, I, I use three sentences to recognize the, you know, the ancestral land of the Ho-Chunk. That's it, this is what it is. We are, we are not adding any, any cost to the taxpayer because it's adding a phrase before you start a speech, recognizing the land where we are, that's it.
Fine with that, if that's where it's staying.
Yeah, this is what it is, yeah. Any other comment, question? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, as one of the co-authors of this, I mean, we chose Ho-Chunk specifically because when you, when you search the internet, you'll find maps of, you know, Wisconsin First Nations, um, and they show you which tribes were occupying which areas of the state, you know, like circa 1,800. Um, going back further than that, you know, thousands of years, I'm sure is a question for the archaeologists, but, um, that's, that's the main reason we chose the Ho-Chunk.
Okay, thank you. Any other common questions? All those in favor of resolution R dash two oh seven dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. What is now? Director Fera? Okay. This one? Okay, so next we move to, um, I don't know which number it is because I don't see it. What it is? It's 11B1.
I'm so moved.
Okay.
Moved, moved to the now on the agenda, is that what we're doing?
Move to approve it.
Oh, move to approve it, I'm sorry. I moved to approve resolution R two fourteen twenty five amend the 2025 General Fund Budget, Recreation and Community Services Department Office Furnishings.
Second.
The Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this, Gabriela?
Uh, this is the, with the reorganization of the, um, the senior center and the, what is, what is the department now called? So I still am working on this, Community Services Department?
Uh, Recreation and Community Services.
Recreation and Community Services, so they, they need some, some new space and Joe can talk, tell more.
Yeah, so with the reorganization, which has been a really slow roll, um, we're looking at moving Jessica, who is, um, Community Outreach Coordinator under Planning into the Social Work Office, which is pretty small, so we had to meet with Eminence Interiors, which is the provider of most of the furniture for the city, um, to come and look at how we redesign our office to fit another desk unit in there. And because Jessica, because that office is right off of the main entry, um, a lot of older adults go in there, it's very busy. Um, Jessica is not really customer facing for our older adults and so we need to afford her some privacy to do her job. So that meant that we had to get some partitions and some other items that would make her desk more feasible and more private for her to work comfortably. Um, and then also with the, um, even though Sarah has moved over to the police station, we did have a desk unit for her, but we still need a few more items for that. So that was the quote that they had, uh, given me for the highest price. We're hoping the actual quote comes in a little bit lower. So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
And just to mention, this, the, it is being, uh, the money is being used, um, leftover personnel money from where Sarah moved over to the Police Department. We haven't filled her position yet, so.
So we are using like a vacancy money to cover.
Vacancy money, extra money just laying around.
Yeah, because we have a, yeah. A dollar tree, yeah, okay. Okay. Any question, comments? The only thing that is, I, I found this furniture very expensive, you know what I mean?
Disagree.
That's it, I'm going to make that comment, but, yeah, we need it, so. Okay, uh, all those in favor of resolution R dash two fourteen dash twenty five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries.
Uh, Madam Mayor and Council President, could I make another amendment to the agenda?
Okay.
Um, I'd like to move up items, uh, D1.
D1.
And nine, and nine B1.
Oh, please, we don't.
Can we just draw them out of a hat?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to be mindful of the, the city staff that have been, that are, had a long day in there here, so I wanted to move those two items up, so Sarah and Wendy.
So we had D1, okay, so library board, and then?
B, nine B1.
And the other one is for, oh, yes, okay. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor of moving, um, one second, is, I don't know the number.
D1 and nine B1.
D1, um, nine B1.
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, so, um.
I am up.
Yeah.
And I just need to remember which of the 85 tabs on my computer I need. Um, I'll give one quick library board update, um, and I'll just, no. I will not give one quick library board update, I will instead, um, introduce and move approval of resolution R two hundred twenty five amending the 2025 Library Fund Budget Utility Costs.
Second.
All right.
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this, Logan?
Uh, so this is what I have mentioned before and Wendy will do a much better job of mentioning more eloquently in a moment, the utility overages that seem to be a continuing theme with the library. We've talked about the solar panels not working as designed and some of the issues that are continuing there and some less than expect, or lower than expected savings by replacing the chiller.
Yes, so I'll add to that.
And we have news for the chip.
It's fixed now, so everything is good. We didn't have heat for about a day at the library, but we're good now. Um, so if you remember, we replaced the chiller at the library in spring of 2024. We were doing the budget in summer of 2024 and we were overly hopeful that the new chiller and the repaired, uh, solar array would lower our costs. It was a tight budget year, we made too much of a cut to utilities and, and it's not panned out the way we wanted it to. So we were looking to move some funds around to cover the overage. We're taking 4,800 out of disability premiums, we're on a premium holiday, so there's some money there. And then the rest of it out of, um, interest income that's higher than expected. So we're moving a total of 35,000, I think that is probably more than we will need. Um, but we want to make sure that we've got, um, plenty there. Our bills have been kind of up and down this year.
Thank you. Any question, comment? The, but we, my expectation was with a new chiller, you know, with these, uh, utility costs will go down, but it seems like.
Yeah, me too. A little disappointing.
No, okay. Okay, um, all those in favor of resolution R dash two hundred dash twenty five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Wendy, thank you for waiting so long. And then we are moving to the Personnel Committee, who is in Personnel?
Me.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I move approval of resolution R dash one seven two dash two five.
Second.
You need to read.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was the.
Request to amend that.
Yeah, the request to, hold on, I had it up here, now I moved it, sorry, give me one second. Yeah, amend the administrator employment agreement, yes, sorry.
The Personnel Committee approve?
After much, uh, very like some long deliberation about that city administrator guy, um, we did, we did, we did approve.
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. Who's second? Logan's second? Okay. Okay, so, oh, you want to, okay, we have a public comment, Sarah first, okay? So he wishes to, David Haidt, he wishes to speak in opposition. Okay, Dave, uh, you have five, three minutes.
David Haidt, 5855 Woods Edge Road? No, absolutely not. So this goes to the governance structure of the city. We had very long discussions on admittedly important issues. This is far more important. So over the last five years, I've used technology to programmatically pull through the search interface of the city servers, all the documents there. I can find no evidence that there's been any observation, even by council members, of any performance evaluation of a city administrator going back to 2016. So, the issue is that what is the job of the city administrator? It is to implement the policy directions of the common council. How do you, as the common council, ensure that the city administrator is implementing your policy directions if you have no influence over his performance evaluation or his pay? Now, if you look at most cities who have an administrator, they have council involvement. It looks to me, based on the information that I have, that there is no council involvement. And there's certainly no public view into the, the information that's, as to the performance in, even in general terms of the city administrator. Point it to me, if there is, point it to me. Where is it? So now, the mayor gets to assign the increase. What's the incentive structure? To follow the general policy directives of the city council or to follow the policy directives of the mayor, who in theory only has the responsibility to enforce the laws? That's the job of the mayor, to take care, to see that the laws of the city and the state are enforced. The mayor doesn't make policy, the mayor implements your policy. That's a big part of the problem here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Um, before we move, I want to clarify that I perform an evaluation to the city administrator and the four people that report to me. Uh, the fire chief, police chief, the city attorney. I work closely with Sarah and I, every year I put, um, I am working on that because it's December time, we do all of that. I set the goal for each of the people that I, they report to me. And then we had me here review and then at the end of the year, I do, um, before January 1st, I need to have the annual evaluation. And the other thing that we do, is we do the 360, um, performance evaluation where I, you know, we choose four to five raters and sometimes some of you are part of the evaluation of the people that I supervise. So, um, we use NeoGov where we, we keep all this information. Every single employee in the city of Fitchburg has an annual evaluation, they have goals. So, um, yes, so Sarah maybe can explain that, but I want to tell you, Dave, that we have a system, okay?
Can you just speak a little bit to the relationship between council and like, and like, uh, the reporting structure or like between us and like the city administrator? Because I felt like that was a little misconstrued a little bit.
What the city administrator does is execute, uh, the policy that the council, you know, put in place.
Right, but like we don't, like, not, we're not, like, we don't oversee them though? You know what I'm saying? Like in terms of, you do.
And I've participated in a 360 review for the administrator as an alder. Yeah, I've done that, it wasn't this past year, but I've done it before, so.
Exactly, yep. Every city employee has a performance evaluation through the NeoGov system. Our city administrator gets the same exact performance evaluation as all of our other employees. We have our four core values, five individual competencies, three goals every year, so, um, we were just working on, I was just helping you through some technical difficulties today on Chad's, uh, annual, uh, evaluation. So the amendment today is to mirror the city attorney's employment agreement. So we have two staff, um, who have employment agreements, our city administrator and our city attorney. Uh, right now, the mayor is only, um, able to give up to a 2% pay increase for merit. Um, if you look at our current city minister pay, if he were to leave, we would have to post at a much higher rate, um, to get a qualified candidate to fill the position. So, um, we had looked at neighboring municipalities and what their pay was for city administrators. So, um, what we're looking to do is mirror the language to the city attorney, which has given mayor the ability to give a higher percentage merit increase for our city attorney, but does not have that same flexibility with our city administrator. So, um, really, that's the only language that we're looking to amend today.
Any question, comment? Are you going to do the presentation?
We have outstanding city staff and Sarah has a great process and I, I trust that if, and it makes sense for the two employees at the city that have a contract to have similar contracts that have the same stipulations. That just is common sense and we need to be competitive in this market because we have a lot of competing priorities and, uh, the administrator role is incredibly important. So I support this.
Any other question? Yeah, Mike?
I would say you had a slide in finance that was really helpful too, just showing the salary in comparable cities in Dane County. Um, and we are currently under a number of those cities. And just to also reemphasize the, the chaos that is created when someone at that level of the city leaves, um, and the amount of time it takes to get someone in and the amount of people that have to fill in for him and the, again, like you said, the additional money you're going to have to spend anyway to get a new candidate in, who then has to come in and learn the city and everything that goes along with it is, um, a substantial cost to the city that is not measured in dollars, so.
Any other comments, question? No? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R dash one seventy two dash twenty five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Sarah, thank you for waiting so long. Okay, so where we are now?
Administrator's report. Should we, I'll, I'll move to flip the mayor's report and the administrator's report so the mayor can start.
Okay, so I have plenty of things to share with you and some of the stuff is very good. Um, the first is that we receive a recognition for the DNR, the Department of Natural Resources. Here it is, okay? It's a plaque. And it's a congratulations, 2025 marks the city of Fitchburg fifth year as a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Green Tier Clear Waters Initiative Chapter participant. The DNR applauds the city of Fitchburg achievement toward reducing sediment and nutrient delivery to lakes, streams and wetlands, as well as a development alternative approach to erosion control and stormwater management. Your leadership and commitment have led to improved environmental outcomes and deliver important achievement like. This is what we did since 2023. We create a green roof guidance document. We contributed to infiltration construction guidance documents and expanded the reach of illicit discharge enforcement. So this is, this is a letter, you want to see it? And this is, so I want to say thank you to Tim and his group, uh, for this award recognition. And then yesterday, we got another good news that, um, Fitchburg has been upgraded from bronze to gold label in the U.S. Department of Energy's Solar Smart Program, which was created in 2016 to help local governments improve solar permitting and inspection, resource sharing and education and ordinance to help accelerate the solar energy transition nationwide. So Fitchburg is now one of the 12 Wisconsin local governments to achieve gold status or higher. This is joined by, uh, Dane County, Madison, McFarland and San Prairie. So congratulations to, um, to the staff, especially to Phil, um, um, and the planning department. Okay, so what is next? So the other thing is I receive an invitation for Gigi's Playhouse Groundbreaking, okay? It's in District Four, so, and District Three, sometimes I don't know which district is, but you know what I mean? But then if you, uh, it's December 5th, uh, from 2:00 to 2:30 PM, if you want to attend, send me an email because there is, um, a registration form, okay? So I can. So I can send you the link. I did that? Oh, okay. Okay. Long day. So I want to mention that I attended a several ribbon cutting, ARPAP is District 3, Logan is going to explain that, the Zion Road opening. I had the opportunity to do a ride along on Sunday afternoon with the police department, and I want to thank Officer Grace Belson for, you know, I spent a couple of hours with her during the day. It was, I wouldn't say that she's, she's very smart, very passionate about her work, and I want to say thank you, Grace, for the wonderful afternoon. And it's great to see this young officer, the, you know, I saw her in action with some stop traffic and all of that, the empathy and the compassion that she has. So I want to say thank you, Grace. So what else? I am working on a, some opening seat in some of the commission. You will see one coming from Parks on the December, we don't know yet, okay? Then we have a plan also, and I'm working with EMS. So we have, because you remember that now with the new agreement with EMS, we need to have four people. So Jake, you are going to be removed as a member, so you're going to be the council representing in the EMS, so we need to appoint three more, okay? So those appointments are going to come in when?
January 13.
January 13, okay? So you are aware of that, that we are working on that. I also want to, I attended last week with a couple of alders to the City Motion kickoff event. This is our strategic framework from economic growth for the next five years. So it was a great meeting, a lot of our partners, stakeholders came. We work as, in a small group, so, so it was great. We are working on that plan, too. And also, we, I attended the Founder and Housing Smart Growth Event. It was held here at the library in Fitchburg. It was a great event, too, more than, how was it, 30, 40 people show up? We talk about housing, and how, especially down payment assistances. So you know, we are working, one of our housing initiatives is, we allocated $2.5 million for, for down payment assistance, and we need to implement that initiative. So we are working on that. What else? No, 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 let me see. The other thing I want to mention, that Chad is going to give you some good news about what are going to be the increases on all of the school district. So that one is when, when he mentioned about Madison, so especially the, all the District 2 and part of District 4, and District 3, we need to, you know, how we are going to communicate with the resident about this huge increase, and how it's going to impact the property taxes. So we have to be prepared for that. And also want to, in, I am planning to be a panelist for an event happening on December 16. It's called Advocate AM, organized by the Great Team Madison Chamber of Commerce. This and a couple of mayors, we are going to discuss about the regional issues, you know, housing transit, all of that. So if you want to come, let me know, so I can register you. What else, City Motion? And then, remember that November 29th is Saturday, a small business, and we need to help our local business. So I will recommend that, you know, for the holidays, when you are looking for gifts and presents, try to shop locally and support our Fitchburg businesses. Saturday is, you know, is the day where, what is, is the? Small business Saturday, yes, sorry. So, so you know, we have restaurants, we have some retail, so try to keep your shopping here in Fitchburg. So we can, because you know, small businesses are the core of our economy. We are supporting, some of those businesses are run by families, so we are supporting family, their dreams. We are also helping our local economy, and we keep our Fitchburg money in Fitchburg, you know what I mean? So, okay, what else? What else? Let me see. That's it for me. Any questions? And I want to wish you all happy Thanksgiving, before I forget, and enjoy this holiday. Thank you. Okay. Your turn.
Good evening again, everyone. Start as usual with some events and other items of potential interest. The Birdie Derby is on Thanksgiving Day, just a couple of days from now, just down to the north here on Esher Parkway, utilizing Fishetry Road and a few other local roads. So folks, please exercise some patience and caution for any road closures resulting from that event. And for anyone participating, it looks like you are going to need to dress in layers and move quickly in order to, to stay warm. The annual employee luncheon is taking place next Tuesday during the lunch hour, and then also at 1:00 p.m. The police department is doing a badge pinning and promotional ceremony here in the common council chambers. There, as a reminder, there is the virtual public information meeting related to the Belt Line study that the Wisconsin Department of Transportation is doing. That is taking place December 4th at 5:30 p.m. The police department is conducting its annual food drive to benefit the Allied Drive Food Pantry. You may have noticed some of the bins here in City Hall, and you may still make deposits in those bins through next Friday, December 5th. The senior center has a couple of things happening as well. One is a giving tree that they have available in the senior center. If you have an interest in taking a look at the giving tree, please either visit the senior center and/or reach out to our Recreation and Community Services Director, Jill McCon. They are also doing, in the month of December, a essential, personal essential items drive to benefit our Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative areas. So I will share a list of items that they are collecting with common council, and it appears as though you can drop those items off at the Fitchburg Senior Center during business hours. And again, with any questions, feel free to, to reach out to Jill on that. I will also mention, the Holiday Lights Tour is scheduled for December 13th. Of course, you can drive around the city at any point besides that particular day, if you'd like as well, and look at all the lights. But of course, there will be specific activities at Fire Station Number 1 that evening, in addition to the, the tour itself. I've got two more items. I think I'll cover the tax item and not save that for last, that the mayor mentioned. I'm going to open and close this update with a statement that says, "The common council controls," if you will, "the spending for the city of Fitchburg. It does not control the spending or levy of the school district that properties lie in, or what Dane County or Madison College do in regards to their levies." The city levy that was approved in the budget last common council meeting increases property taxes on the averaged single-family assessed home at just over $500,083, or about 3.1%. That is the portion of, of the property tax bill that this body sitting here at the dais can control, if you will, and, and influence. I will offer what the preliminary calculations are in regards to the upcoming tax rates on the average single-family assessed home. That does include the appropriate tax credits and garbage-related charges. These numbers do need to be balanced yet with Dane County, although we do not anticipate significant change in these numbers. So again, for the average single-family house in the city of Fitchburg, the increase in property taxes for those properties or those houses located in the Madison Metropolitan School District is a $988 increase. I will also remind the common council and anybody listening that there were two referenda passed in the city of Madison, I'm sorry, with the Madison Metropolitan School District in November of 2024. Those two referenda totaled approximately $600 million in additional levy for the school district. The single-family houses located in the Oregon area school district have an approximate $267 increase. And the homes in the Verona area school district have an approximately $465 increase in their property taxes. As I mentioned, the city increase in the portion of the tax bill was $83 approved by this body. Typically, when someone is taking a look at their overall property tax bill, about one-third of that property tax bill is directly attributable to the city of Fitchburg. And again, that is the component of the tax bill that this body has authority over. The other two-thirds of that tax bill, this body does not have any authority over, and that two-thirds of the tax bill does not remain here in the city of Fitchburg. That, while it's collected here, is sent to the appropriate taxing jurisdiction after it is collected. Any questions related to that, before I wrap with one other item of a different topic?
I want to mention that the bills are going to be out around December 10, so...
Yes, that's our anticipated mail date, is December 10.
So you are aware, because you're going, we are going to receive a lot of call, email, especially, I am in District 2, District 2, part of 3, and part of 4, so.
I have a quick question. And if you don't know, I'll just email Misty. Do you know what the percentage increases were for each district, like just the school district percent?
I do have that, as a matter of fact. Misty was kind enough to share that with me. The school district increase, and this is obviously before any credits or the garbage fee is added. The Verona area school district was approximately a 6.2% increase. The Oregon area school district was approximately 3.1% increase, which also is aligned with the city's increase of 3.1%. Madison Metropolitan School District is approximately just over a 20% increase. Dane County's increase was approximately 3.9%. And Madison College had an approximate 2.2% increase.
Happy holidays. Don't kill Chad.
Any, any other questions related to that, before I wrap with one last item? No? I just want to update the common council. I know that you're aware that city staff and a group of representatives from the Historical Society and community members have been working on history display for the entrance or near the entrance to City Hall. That group met last week, I believe it was. And we anticipate moving forward with some conceptual designs here over the next few months. And the funding for that particular project is coming from the excess increment from TID closures. It is not city tax levy money. Any questions at all?
You are in shock.
A little bit.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chad. So next, we move to item eight, is Commission and Committees Report, and we are going to start with Plan Commission.
I will start with the resolutions. I'll move approval of resolution R-23325, approving certified survey map request CS262025 by Lees Strait Agent for the Wisconsin Department of Corrections to join three parcels into one lot on property adjacent to 4986 County Highway M.
Second.
This was approved by Plan Commission.
Ag and Rowell approved.
Basically, this is the same, this is related to the project for the juvenile detention facility for the Department of Corrections in the southern part of the rural area of Fitchburg. This is something that needs to be done when you're having one, the certified survey map to join existing parcels has to happen when the proposed facility crosses property lines. That's what this is. There is a small caveat here that they should be doing a certified survey map for the entire property that they own, but they aren't going to be able to do that with the other piece of their property. So they will be doing another certified survey map in the next 24 months for all pieces, but this is really just for the pieces, the parcels that will be combined together for the juvenile detention facility.
Any question, comment? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-233-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
I move to postpone resolution R-23425, which is the preliminary plat, PP261825, to the December 9th meeting.
Second.
I believe that there, just as more work that needs to be done.
Yeah, we have a public comment.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this was passed in Plan Commission, but there, I guess there needs to be more time.
Yeah, so, so we have, it had to go to Park Commission.
Oh, it needs to be referred to Parks Commission. Do we need to, do I need to refer it? Move to refer it?
No, it's...
It's already there.
It is already there.
Oh, got it.
Can I ask for a public comment? Dave, Dave Haidt, you wish to speak in opposition of this, so... So because you're waiting, so, you know, let's...
5855 Woods Edge Road. So I think for probably about the 10th time, I want to point out that, like other land use decisions, even at the council level, this is a quasi-judicial procedure. What does that mean? That means that this is run like an evidentiary hearing. You should have in front of you a list of all the items that need to be satisfied in order for you to adjudicate whether or not the evidence that's also in front of you for each of the items, whether those items are in fact met. That's the legal standard, both at the Plan Commission and at the council. Now, in particular, the thing that I'm always concerned with is this statement here. Fitchburg Ordinance 24-2B5, the rules of the State Department of Natural Resources relating to wetlands, floodplains, and erosion control, and it says, "No person shall divide any land unless there's compliance with all the requirements of this chapter," for what I just read. So in order for there to be evidence on all these issues, you have to have, in order to satisfy substantive due process for both the public and for the land divider, a list in front of you, and in front of the land divider and the public, so we all agree on what those rules of the State of Wisconsin, DNR, that relate to, it says, "and relating to wetlands, floodplains, and erosion control." Well, most certainly, NR103 is such a rule. So why is that not in the packet if not more specifically enumerated in the law? Now, I want to change direction here and use the last minute by saying, this is very preliminary, but there's an opportunity here. So at the Plan Commission, they said that the regional detention facility that was supposed to be built is not going to be. But that's a lowland area that's, has a lot of area that's owned by the city. So we've got a 35 at a minimum, and probably much higher, million-dollar unfunded mandate to clean up Nine Springs Creek. Why not take some time and see if it's possible to use that configuration in total to build a combination of natural and constructed wetlands that can remove some of that suspended dissolved phosphorus as a way of cleaning up and making inroads to reducing the pollution levels that are in Nine Springs Creek? That would be a very good use of the time, and this is an opportunity. You don't get land that has both the... You don't get land that has both the capability, given the fact that it's lowland, wetland, and that it's not already spoken for in some other way in order to do this. That's being smart with taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so...
Motion to postpone on the table.
Okay, so all those in favor of postponing Resolution R-234-25 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
And then just to finish it out for the meeting, there was a conditional use passed for Fury Athletics. There was a ADR for German auto expansion and also a pre-application for the Irish 1855 residential development. And then Deanna also talked about some forthcoming smart code amendments that will make developments in those areas of the city easier. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, where are we at?
Parks.
Oh, Board of Public Works. Anything else that you need to add?
Nothing to add there, Madam Mayor. And Parks Commission, nothing there either. We meet Thursday next week for our monthly meeting.
Thursday?
Thursday next week. Next week, Thursday, be the 4th of December.
For public works? Oh, Parks, I'm sorry. Sorry, Dave.
Public Works meets on the 1st.
Yeah, yeah, this is where I go. Oh, okay, so Parks, okay, so next week. Okay, thank you. A Library Board.
We had two bidders for the children's library request for proposals. We should hopefully have more information to share at our next council meeting in December. Brett Wagner, our newest Library Board member, had his newest, or his first meeting at our meeting on November 19. And I believe that will be it for tonight.
Thank you. Commission aging well.
Yes. I would like to just mention from the, an update on the report that we received 12 applications for the part-time social work position. And three of the 12 candidates were interviewed this past week. So look forward to continuing those interviews and getting a qualified person to serve in that role.
Okay, thank you. Resource Conservation Commission.
We have not met since our last council meeting, and we have no December meeting. So our next meeting will be January 12. Just want to remind everyone that at some point in January, we're going to have the next Green Thursday event.
Oh, okay.
Green Thursday, so at the library, we will have either a movie or a panel discussion or a presentation of some kind related to sustainability, environmentalism, et cetera.
And you had one, isn't it? Because I attended that.
Yes.
It was a couple of weeks ago.
November 6, I believe. Yeah, that was the 11th hour movie.
Thank you. Transportation and Transit Commission.
I will start with the resolution. I move approval of Resolution R 20825, adopting the 2025-2030 Transit Plan.
Second motion.
And TTC approved.
Just deferred to council. There were some...
Oh, you deferred?
We deferred to council. There were some, Bill had some questions or some things we asked Ross to look into.
Before Ross, before we move to you, I have a public comment. Dave Haight, he wishes to speak in opposition.
David Haight, 5855 Woods Edge Road. I guess it's not really opposition to the plan itself. I want to talk about what the comprehensive plan is. So the comprehensive plan is where the details of the city get put in an enforceable fashion. So it's not a shell. It has comprehensive information in it, and it has to be there. So for example, there have been two significant Wisconsin court decisions, presidential, saying that if there's not sufficient level of detail, for example, in the case of the neighborhood plans that were approved, to show how those neighborhood plans will interact with the transportation in the rest of the city, that does not meet the standard for review at a court challenge. And so what I'm pointing out here is this plan, in some fashion, needs to go into the comprehensive plan. If you care about transit-oriented development, well, you've had no luck getting it at, right? If it's in the comprehensive plan, it becomes part of the statement in the law that says must be compatible, as in does not contradict the comprehensive plan. So if you want transit-oriented development, you put the significant aspects of the transportation plan into the comprehensive plan. That's its function. Its function is to reflect the values of our community in detail. We shouldn't be doing all this ad hocery, right? So I've heard things people talk about, well, you know, Greenfield, they should be happy because now they got a plan. We're not going to have, they don't have to worry about people changing things. Heck, you know how many changes there have been in North Stone Prairie? It doesn't look anything like it did when it was planned. That's no guarantee of anything. What's important to put in is more detail. The more detail you have in the plan, the more enmeshed and stronger the vision and the values of our community get embedded in the plan. It becomes much harder to change. If it's just nothing in the plan, a comprehensive plan amendment is easy. Just change it because there's nothing there to contradict. There's no vision in the plan. That vision is lost with the neighborhood plan if it doesn't go into the comprehensive plan in detail. And this is an element that needs to go into in some form in detail into the comprehensive plan. The transportation plan clearly is, if not the most important, one of the most important aspects of our city planning. So let's not stop here. Let's go all the way. Get it in the plan.
Who is going to introduce this? No, I know, but who's going to, Ross?
I can, if that's what we want to do.
Sure.
Yeah, you're okay?
All right. Yeah. So this resolution approves the 2025-2030 City of Fitchburg Transit Plan and directs staff, namely mostly myself, to work towards the goals and changes that are outlined in this plan. The comprehensive plan directs the annual development of a transit plan. This transit plan was last adopted in 2022 and included the Metro Transit Network redesign. This new plan includes bus rapid transit and then expansions of Route 65 and 75 to all-day hourly routes. And then also includes goals and other route modifications that staff will seek to meet those goals and make those route modifications happen. So at Transportation and Transit, we had good discussion about this, and the plan was approved. And then, like Alder Herb said, at Board of Public Works, there were some questions and comments that were deferred to council and left up to me to make those changes. The version of the plan that is in the council packet reflects those changes that were requested at the Board of Public Works meeting. So there, in your packet, there's a clean version of the plan. That's what would be adopted. And then there's also a redlined version of the plan that is, the base version of that is the old 2022 Transit Plan. And then the red lines are the changes made for this new 2025 Transit Plan. So happy to answer any questions or go over anything that anybody would like to.
Thank you, Ross. Gabriela?
Can you just point out what changes were made between Transportation and Transit and Board of Public Works? Okay, oh, Bill, Bill said he was going to...
Yes. Well, so I can let Bill start since most of them are his, yeah.
Yeah, I sent Ross quite a laundry list via email, and then we discussed most of it in the Board of Public Works. And I read through it, and I see that nearly everything that I had in there has been addressed. So thank you for your efforts. I'll just give a few of the highlights. In the introduction, you know, there's a statement in there that says investing in public transportation provides an opportunity to, and it had said, reduce fuel consumption. And I had suggested about we reduce congestion, crashes, and pollution instead, or in addition, and that's, that was a change that was made. He had also, in the introduction, referenced our Clean Energy Resolution. And I suggested we also mention the Sustainability Plan. So that, so there are two resolutions mentioned in there now. I also, you know, the Transit Plan didn't explicitly mention wheelchair users in the past. And so he put that in at the appropriate place under, on page six of the clean version, Goal 2, under the Walk to Transit section. So that explicitly calls out wheelchair users now. Also on page six, under Goal 3, it calls for an increase in density. And I had suggested as well clustering development such that, you know, as it says now, it's written pretty cleanly. Increase density and cluster development to make fixed route service feasible. So this was, you know, I had suggested, and, you know, not at the appropriate, not to the appropriate audience, that we should have a transit overlay in our zoning ordinance when we do the overhaul. That will help Metro as well as the city. You know, if we can decide, hey, this is where we want public transit to go. This is where we want the development to be. This is where we're going to build up our transit-oriented development. I guess there's a couple items on my wish list that are still outstanding. So like in the biking-related items, you know, they mostly concentrate, this is the Transit Plan. It mostly concentrates on things happening at the transit stops themselves. So we talk about having bike parking near transit stations or B-cycle stations near the transit stops. You know, and that's great. But for, if we have B-cycle at the transit stops, we also, you know, that's the end of the journey, right? So we also need it at the other end, at the beginning of the journey. So near people's houses and near businesses. So I guess, you know, it could be either the start or the end of the journey, right? You get on the bus after riding your B-cycle there, or you get on the B-cycle after taking a bus somewhere, and you need someplace to come from or someplace to go. So, you know, we should try and have B-cycle stations at more businesses. And I think we really should strive to put a B-cycle station, you know, in every TIF district, at least one. And then the other thing, well, I guess that, yeah, that's really the main one. And then I guess I just wanted to ask Ross one outstanding question here. There was the Performance Measures Table separate from the Action Items, and it had been kind of redlined completely out. And I had said that there were, you know, some items on there that were no longer represented at all. And it looks like you maybe brought the entire table back. So some of the things are listed twice now. I didn't know if that was a concern or not.
Right. So I'll kind of, are you okay if I go through these things kind of in the order you said them?
Yeah, people are tired of hearing me talk.
So for the B-cycle stations, or I guess not for B-cycle stations, but for bike parking at storefronts, in staff discussion, we felt that that was a better fit for something like the Bike and Ped Plan instead of the Transit Plan, since this plan focuses on transit stops and the transit routes in general. And I understand there's a lot of interaction between the Bike and Ped Plan and the Transit Plan. But staff just felt that the Bike and Ped Plan was a better spot for that goal. And then for the Performance Measures Table, you're right that some of these things are listed both in the Performance Measures section and then in the Action Items Table right above it as measures of successes, or as measures of success. I think that's fine for this plan because the Performance Measures, after kind of considering that section, it's more of a, you know, year-to-year tracking function for those Performance Measures. Whether they're directly related to an action item or not, we can still track those things year to year. So I think it's fine to have those in both of those places.
Okay, any question, comment? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Couple kind of broader points. And I think, Ross, I'll ask a question and let you defer to your knowledge on this. I just want to first go back to Mr. Haight's comment about the structure of the plans. The first, the first sentence of the second paragraph of the introduction says that the city's 2030 comp plan lists the development of a five-year transit improvement plan in its policy. So would it be fair to say that this is like a sub-plan of that so that this is actually essentially included within the comp plan by the nature of the comp plan says that this needs to exist?
I would probably defer to Deanna or Valerie to say if this is, could be considered included in the comp plan or a part of the comp plan. But they are extremely interrelated. And all of the, basically, the second, I believe, or no, the Section 1 of the Transit Plan is just a copy and paste of all of the transit-related goals that are in our current comp plan. So if you just want to see what the comp plan says about transit and transportation, it's all right here in your packet, the stuff that relates to this plan. So they're very interrelated.
So we're not doing this on an island. This is part of a coordinated,
No.
well-oiled machine by the book. Just, I'm just putting that out there into the world for folks who may have heard the public comment prior to this. Wanted also, just for the good of the room here, we had been previously required, suggested, encouraged to update this annually. And now we'll be moving toward every three years because it's been three years since we've done this as, since the last update in 2022. Is that correct?
That's not really the reason why we're moving to three years. It just, it hasn't been updated in the last three years because I was not the staff member responsible for it when I started this job, and I was not aware that it needed to be updated. We will be moving to it being a three-year update cycle once we update the comp plan, which is kind of just starting that process, so...
Okay.
We kind of chose the three-year time cycle because it just seemed like a good time cycle.
And I just want to really quickly pull out one bus reroute that's in here that we've talked about in this chamber before with some of the changes to the D that affected folks on Fitchrona and Nesbit, where there's a couple of senior housing options in the JT Klein proposal coming forward. One of the items in kind of a medium priority, medium cost is rerouting Route 75 to turn south on Fitchrona and southwest on Nesbit, then south on Maple Grove to continue into Verona. So essentially, that would replace the service that was lost by, was it the D2? One of the D bus routes that was
Yes, D2.
taken away without our input, much to the chagrin of many folks in this room and elsewhere. And I think I'll just leave it there.
Any other question, comment?
Just wanted to commend Ross on great work updating the plan. It's exciting how much, how far we've come, which I think is reflected in by all the things that we were able to remove because they were complete. And I think the forthcoming changes to the routes that are also coming because it's budgeted is really exciting. And just wanted to commend you for your great work.
Yes, thank you, Ross. Yes, Mike?
I just want to say I appreciate keeping the, like Logan said, the Nesbit Road service in there just as an item. I know it's not something we can do soon, but I'm just happy that it's in there as something that just is on the list and that we're going to keep monitoring it. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Any other question, comment? Okay, so all those in favor of, oh, yeah, resolution R-20-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Ross. Okay, so next we move to Community and Economic Development Authority. So Joe is out. So Jake, you're going to be part of the committee. They meet at seven o'clock in the morning.
Their next meeting is December 4th at 7:00 AM.
So you know. It's a, it's a nice committee. I started there, so. Yeah, so it's a fun committee too. Okay, Ag and Rural Affairs Committee.
Yeah, so we met Tuesday, the 18th. We discussed a couple of things. One, a collaboration with Bike and Ped around doing kind of a, they're looking to do bike tours in the spring. This is something they did in the Ag and Rural area a few years ago. So Deanna was nice enough to dig up the documents from when we did it. So we're going to look at restarting that in some way. So I'm going to talk to Joe about this. And then we had a discussion around the role of the group in the comp plan update. So just kind of that, that group is kind of, I mean, that's the group that is going to be the go-to for, you know, how we're, what the future of farming is in Fitchburg and kind of how we're going to incorporate that into the comp plan. There was some discussion around like the future of farming, if it's going to continue to be corn and soybeans, if we're looking to move to smaller lots, things like that. And Deanna did a really good job of setting the stage for the fact that Ag and Rural is going to be kind of the contact group for that and that they should be prepared to kind of advocate for the farming community during that comp plan process. So that kind of set the stage for the coming year, I guess. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Bicycle and pedestrian commission. Joe is not here. The bike and pedestrian plan is moving through committees, so.
It's in the consent agenda this evening?
Yeah, so please, you need to read that. It's a long plan, but. EMS Commission. Did you attend the last meeting? Okay.
I don't have any specific updates to share, though.
Okay, thank you. HNI.
No updates at the moment.
Housing Advisory Committee.
We meet next in February.
Oh, February, okay. Landmark and Preservation Commission.
No report.
Tree Advisory Committee.
We meet December 4th.
Thank you. And then we did this report from other committees and commission. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed this, some public works.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We, Tim gave us a really good presentation. We have software and tracking with our sweepers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they, they do a really good job of tracking where we've been, how much we collect. And they can create work orders when they, when they see things. And it was a very impressive presentation. We think it'll provide big benefits for the city.
There is like a video, something like that?
So we are actually trying out some GPS technology in the two street sweepers. And to all their herpes point, it's actually been interesting. Tim just showed this to me last week as well. The, the maps in our GIs system show where the street sweepers have been.
Yeah, okay.
What they have collected as far as weight of material. This is a significant improvement over the paper-based mapping that we were using not all that long ago, AKA like a couple of months ago. So this is something that we're using right now, an iPad with GPS technology in it. Want to say it's, you know, roughly $500 for the iPad. And then there's obviously a monthly cost for the cellular connection and so forth. But we actually hope to roll this out even further over time. The snowplows are actually another great application for this, to be able to help with route planning. Perhaps there could be some more efficiencies. And just to kind of demonstrate again with a bit more precision, how long, how long does it take to plow each route, for instance?
Can we track and say where it is?
I know you were going to bring that up.
Because I know that there are the municipality that use in the north of Wisconsin.
Yeah, yeah.
So that one will be fun to say, oh.
Yeah, we can take a look and see what the, what that might look.
Your street in Julio, though.
You'll at least know where it is, so.
Dave, I live in the cul-de-sac, so mine is the last one.
You never get plowed. Wait till spring.
Yeah, so. Okay, that one is fun, oh, cool, yeah. Okay, where are we at? Finance, standing committee reports, we are moving to finance committee.
I have no general report. And I'm trying to see if I have anything else on the, no, nothing.
Nothing, okay. And then we did personnel committee, anything else to add to personnel?
No.
No, okay. Public Safety and Human Services.
Ordinance 2025-023, adopting Wisconsin Administrative Code, SPS 327, camping units by creating section 3677 of the Fitchburg General Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Public Safety approved.
Okay, what is this?
So this was something that the state administrative code added. And so we, we were, we were required to put this in our ordinances. And it basically gives, gives our city staff the, the right or the review of, of additional buildings, I guess, Chad, would that summarize it?
Yeah, you've summed it up well. It's effectively a housekeeping item to ensure that we're in compliance and concert with the state administrative code.
Okay, thank you. Any other question, comment? Here none, all those in favor of ordinance 225-0-23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to add the, the place with the golfing simulators and the old, they're, they're expecting to open the first week after, after New Year's.
Yeah, I know, I know that they are working on that, I have followed.
We approved their, we approved their liquor license.
Okay, great, great.
They're targeting that date for their opening.
There was something we referred out tonight in the consent agenda.
What? Okay. Okay, let's move on to unfinished business. So we have a couple of resolution.
I'll move approval of resolution R-19725, resolution designating Blackhawk Church, 5935 Astro Drive as Aldermanic District Number Four Ward 20 polling location.
Second.
Okay, so what is this?
Tracy?
So this resolution here effectively has Aldermanic District Four Ward 20 currently voting at Fitchburg Fire Station Number One at 5791 Lacy Road. That polling location is at or near capacity for elections, particularly those with larger turnouts. Blackhawk Church is a polling location that has been added over the last, I think, couple of years. That does have adequate space amenities and parking to add additional voters there, specifically those who reside in Ward 20. So if we effectively approve this here tonight, that splitting of the wards for the District Four will even out the number of registered voters per the two polling locations in District Four. So there would still be the polling location at Fire Station Number One and also the one at Blackhawk Church for residents of District Four.
Okay, any question, yes, Michael.
Do we do postcards? Is that what we do to notify? I would just encourage everyone who has social media or newsletters or whatever to also include this in there, please, no matter what district you are. As a former poll worker, it's really frustrating when people get to their polling site and are told to go somewhere else. So if any way we can get the word out would be helpful.
I think we are going to come, are we doing like an article to the Fitchburg Star so we can inform of all these changes?
We will send a postcard to all affected registered voters. Obviously, myvote.wi.gov allows people to search their polling locations. It would be helpful if the Fitchburg Star was summarizing the contents of said meeting this evening and would also be reporting on this change for us. I'm sure that we will, as the election time comes in, will be providing some outreach via our social media and other avenues.
Yeah, but I think it would be great if we write an article to the Fitchburg Star, you know, to, because the people read that, you know, newspaper and I don't know. It's my opinion, but.
I'll put it on my list.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-197-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, next one.
I'll move approval of resolution R, oh.
Yeah.
Oh, R-19825, resolution to add polling location designating 2220 Traceway Drive as Aldermanic District Number Two, wards nine, 10, and 22 polling location.
Second.
So this resolution in front of you designates the currently named hub that was just opened last evening at 2220 Traceway Drive as the second polling location for Aldermanic District Two. Wards nine, 10, and 22 would be voting at this location and no longer voting at the Wyndham Garden on Cahill Main. Wyndham Garden would remain polling location for other wards within District Two. And again, this is an effort to better balance out the number of registered voters at polling locations in the city. This will be our seventh polling location. So Districts Two, Three, and Four will all have two, two polling locations at this point in time.
Next is going to be District One, I need another one, maybe. Okay, any question, comment? Okay, this is great. So all those in favor of resolution R-198-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next one, who is doing the next one?
I'll move approval of ordinance 2025-030, amending appointed officers' titles and reporting structures by amending section 6439, 6446, 6447, 6514, 6557, 6621, 8101, 8103, 8105, 8107, 8108, 8110, 8112 through 8115, 10162, 10303, 10345, 295, 5225, 5450, 644, 64, 672, and 673 of Fitchburg General Code of Ordinances.
I'm sorry, what was that? Second, Hut, Hut.
Okay.
I can cover this one as well.
Can I mention something?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
We have someone registered to speak in opposition, it was David Haight.
Okay, and he has since left Common Council chambers. This ordinance update effectively codifies what has already previously been approved in City Hall reorganization. That was approved not too long ago by the Personnel Committee, some restructuring resulting from the failed referendum. As we continue to chart course related to carrying out our responsibilities to serve, provide municipal services to our community, we'll continue to find efficiencies in our operations and adjustments to staffing as appropriate. I won't go through the list of all of the changes that were made, but obviously, common council has been made of those changes as has city staff. They were also, as I mentioned, approved by personnel. You have a redlined version of the affected ordinances that all their gear heart was gracious enough to read as a supporting document. So effectively, some title changes resulted as well as reporting structures changed. There were others cleanup done while we were in there, such as the Economic Development Director was still referred to as a coordinator in ordinances. So we took the opportunity, since we were here, to, to adjust that properly. So again, effectively, this is also a housekeeping item in front of you, reflecting previously approved changes.
Any question, comments? No? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 225-0-30, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next, we are moving to new business and we have an action on a claim. So Valerie Seisman, our city attorney, she will lead this conversation.
Good evening.
We don't see you.
Hello.
Oh, no.
There we go. So the city has received a claim that is in your packet resulting from damage to a tire. That's a resident had received while driving down a city street. We have a recommendation, we've submitted this claim to our insurance as a standard practice for all claims that we receive. And we do have a recommendation for a denial of that claim. We don't believe the city is liable for damages here. And staff would recommend that this claim be denied. Happy to answer some kind of general questions. I will say, generally speaking, as a matter of practice, we don't want to get into an in-depth discussion of a case that at least has the potential to result in litigation in an open session. But generally speaking, these types of claims are fairly straightforward. So if the council wants an extensive discussion, we could certainly add a closed session in the future. But if you have any kind of general questions, I'm happy to address those.
I move to deny the Catherine Lays claim.
Second.
All those in favor of denying the Catherine Lays claim, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next we move to item 11B12, okay, yes.
I'll move approval of resolution R-21925, purchase of lockers and evidence storage system for police services facility.
Second.
This was passed by Finance.
What is this, Gabrielle?
It's a $525,000 expense to buy the purchase in the lockers and the evidence storage, which is not part of the JP colon bid. Prices are going to go up next year as much as 5%. So the recommendation is to purchase it now. Our understanding is that the company is willing to store it until the installation happens. As you all know, the, the building is not likely to open until the spring of 2027. So the installation would happen probably not for the next 12 months or at least eight to 12 months. And, yeah, it's really just to save the money. This, this current bid is about $50,000 under what was budgeted for these items.
And I believe it's about 5% is the anticipated increase effective January 1. So on this dollar amount, it does save an additional over $25,000 in costs associated with this particular item. And that's why there's a direct referral to get this purchase ideally approved tonight and made before the price increase, January 1.
And they are now going to charge us to store this?
That is my understanding.
They was, we're going to be paying the $25,000 back. Okay, any question, comments? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-219-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next we are moving to, next one, Gabrielle.
I move approval of resolution R-22425, authorizing contracting with Baker Tilly for IRA tax credit consulting and compliance services for the police services facility project.
Second.
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this?
For our police services facility, we're doing a lot of carbon reduction, you know, renewable energy, including solar and geothermal. There are Inflation Reduction Act credits available. These are both difficult to apply for and difficult to comply with. And staff does not have the capacity to do so. So we're looking to hire Baker Tilly to manage both the application and the compliance so we can get the money in tax credits. The quick estimate from Baker Tilly is that it could be upwards of $530,000 of tax credits. I did at Finance ask about the possibility for that money disappearing. Apparently, there is some level of confidence that, that this money will still be there and that some documentation should be filed ASAP in order to make sure that we do continue to qualify. Because some, there are some deadlines in that regard. The funding source for this is TID closure money. The estimate is $96,000 for these services. And there's sufficient funding in TID closure to cover that.
I have a question. You mentioned that the money is coming for TID closure from which bucket?
The excess increment.
Yeah, no, but we have different categories there.
I believe it's coming from the interest earned.
Okay.
There was $75,000 that was identified for grant assistance and other services. Some of that has been spent, if you will. And then the budget amendment that is included in here, which for some reason my computer is not cooperating in allowing me to pull up the document associated with this referral, ultimately authorizes the approximate $100,000 for the services of Baker Tilly.
Yeah, but yeah, my question is why we didn't include this in the, as a soft cost for the As a soft cost for the police facility?
I think approximately $50,000 was allocated in that fund, in the project cost, in my conversation with Paul Woodard.
Okay, okay. Any question, comment? This tax credit for non-residential will expire in June 30 of 2026, so we need to have all of this done soon. This is what we are moving forward. Any question, comment, none? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R.224-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next?
I'll move approval of resolution R.22125, authorizing legal services in defense of the Reginald Mims lawsuit.
We are going to close session.
Second.
Finance Committee did pass this.
We are going to close session.
I'll move to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 1985-1G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved.
Second.
Before we... I just want to ask if we need to extend the meeting time before we go into closed session, if we're longer than eight minutes?
That's probably a great observation. That'd be helpful.
Okay, so first.
I'll make a motion that we extend the meeting by one hour. Hopefully not needing it. I'd rather do it once than have to do it three times.
All those in favor to extending our meeting for another hour, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are extending the meeting for another hour. Thank you.
Work expands to fill the time a lot.
And now we have to pass the closed session.
So who second the closed session? Okay. All those in favor of going to a closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move to reconvene into open session.
Second.
All those in favor of reconvening into open session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay. So now I need... All those in favor of resolution R.221-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Valerie. So now we are moving... Alder District reports, and we will start with number one.
Number two.
I'm too tired.
Yeah?
Couple of things. I also attended the City in Motion event. I thought that was quite useful and eye-opening. And the birdie derby was mentioned. I'm actually going to be one of the bike escorts. I will be riding along, escorting the Lead 5K Male Runner. I also was at the Hub grand opening yesterday, the ribbon cutting yesterday, and...
It's going to be the Hub.
Well, I just wanted to say in front of the camera that this is quite a good location. I looked at the map, and I can see that within a 10 to 15-minute walk, people can get there from The Ridge Apartments, Bella Springs, Ochala Springs, Valley View, View at Pinnacle Park, Renew at The Greens, The High Line, Terrace Point, Whispering Pines Condos, Pittsburgh Springs, Renew High Ridge, and Sun Valley Apartments. And if you're a fast walker, even from the Hatchery Hill condos. And if you're not a fast walker, you can hop on a Bicycle or take the B up there.
Okay, thank you.
I attended the Wisconsin Housing Economic Development Authority Housing Conference a couple of weeks ago, and it was great. Lots of great connections there, along with Loreen Gager, our housing specialist, was there as well. I also went to the City in Motion kickoff, the economic development plan. It was great to see so many partners from around the community there. Really loved seeing that. I was also at the Traceway Drive Park opening last night. Felt really good. That's basically been in the works since I was elected to council. So almost six years now that that's been in the talks, and it's really great to see that finally come to fruition. And then it looks like we might be getting snow this weekend, which I'm very excited about, but not everybody is. So thank you to the Public Works crews that will be out there. And also, please make sure you adopt your local fire hydrant and clear it of snow to prevent... Or to make it easier in case of the outside chance of a fire. It'll be easy for the fire department to utilize that fire hydrant. Thanks.
Thank you. District Three.
I also attended the park formerly known as the Hub ribbon cutting, the City in Motion kickoff, as Mayor Roda Frada mentioned, also the Sayen Road ribbon cutting. Was fortunate enough to talk to Channel 27 on their morning show at 5:00 AM to preview that event and just relay how important it is that we got this project done. Also wanted to welcome Art Pup to District Three. That is the new mobile and in-person dog grooming business that is located in, I want to say it's Ochala Springs. It's off of Ochala Drive, so just behind Fish Hatchery Road in one of the new... Inventor Capital apartment buildings. That's... Commercial space has been vacant since that building was built, something like three years. So it's great to see a business expanding and that empty space starting to fill up. Also wanted to acknowledge our first responders. It was a rough couple of weeks in District Three. We had a fatal fire on Fish Hatchery Road, and then some of the same crews who were there responded to a fatal crash on Highway 14 the morning of the Sayen Road ribbon cutting. And then not an hour after we left the Sayen Road ribbon cutting, some of them were at a rollover crash at Agora on Cheryl Parkway. So just, you know, one of those is tough enough to respond to, and three of them within such a short period is significant. So I just wanted to share my appreciation and the appreciation of, I think it was like 450 people who reacted, liked my post on Facebook. So on behalf of a grateful community, thank you to those who responded to those situations. Also wanted to quickly highlight some traffic improvements done by Dane County at the request of some of our Terravessa neighbors. I'm going to just quickly pull up this email. So there was some confusion at Lacy and MM as you're pulling into Terravessa, a median at the stoplight, and there would be cars kind of going on the wrong side or maneuvering where they shouldn't be maneuvering. So there have been several fixes made, including earlier this year, realigning the keep right sign on the north median to face the eastbound approach and installing a flexible tubular marker post on the north median nose. The next mitigation steps will be installing a flexible tubular marker post on the south median nose and installing intersection dashed marking for both eastbound and westbound left turns. The tubular posts have already been installed, and the marking will happen as weather allows. And as Alder Gerhart mentioned, doesn't sound like that'll be in the short term. And I'll just give one quick plug. We have a lot of meetings canceled in December, so if any constituents would like to chat, you know, go through the budget, talk about anything on your mind. I have a little bit more free time in my calendar with some of the meetings that have been canceled, so I'm happy to sit down and chat with folks about whatever is on your mind.
Thank you. Donan?
My co-Alder pretty much summed everything up, so I will pass it to District Four.
Okay.
All right. I also attended the Funders Forum on Housing, City in Motion kickoff, Hub grand opening. I watched unspecified Alders use the slides on the playgrounds without injury, so that was helpful.
Just barely.
And I just want to congratulate... I mean, there were three people that are sitting up here. Well, one's not here, but that were there at the start of that, and I know they are proud of this project, and they should be. And so I just wanted to congratulate the three of them. It's the start of hunting season, and so there is hunting land in District Four in the southern end of the city, so if you hear gunshots, it's okay. And also, I'm not a hunter, but I'm a hiker, and so if you are out hiking, wear bright colors, put bright colors on your dog, put a vest on your dog. It's just a good thing to do now. And then two events on December 6th at 11:30 to 3:30 at the library. The Pittsburgh Buy Nothing Group is having a free sale, which is essentially just everyone brings their stuff they don't want, and you can just come and take whatever you want. The Buy Nothing Pittsburgh Group is nice if you want to get rid of things. It's also the way I ended up with a bat house that can't be hung in my house, that somehow ended up on my house. And then at December 13th, at the Memorial United Church on Lacy and Richardson, they are having a cookies and craft sale. And then the proceeds will provide scholarships for students at the Dar al-Kalima University of Arts in Palestine. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Jake, do you want to say something?
I'm happy to be here, and thank you all for this opportunity. And I assume my colleague here summarized everything quite well.
So, and I also want to welcome you to this body. So the other thing I want to say that if you have any questions, comments, you know, please reach out to us, reach out to the staff, you know? You're going to have an orientation with them. I want to have an orientation with you. But, you know, we are here to support each other. And if you have some people here, they have more seniority than other ones, and they know more about some, you know, or they are more passionate about some topic than the other ones. So reach out, you know? It's okay, the first year is going to be kind of like a learning experience. Well, you have a short period, okay, for four months, but it's going to be more like a learning, you know? But ask question, you know, be curious, you know, challenge us, and it's okay to disagree respectfully, you know? So, and I will say thank you for serving, okay? So. Okay, so announcement. So also I want to... Remember, next week we have the staff luncheon. So if you want to participate, you come and say hi to the staff and say thank you for all the great work they are doing, because at the end of the day, we know the staff, they are the engine of this community, the city, moving forward. So I would say that please come during lunchtime.
Has that been sent to the council by email?
I don't think so. We don't invite you.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, like, if you want us to come, we can.
You can come. Yeah, you can.
I don't want to put that on.
I think it's been an invite way back, isn't it? Or no? Yeah, I don't remember. And then at 1 o'clock is the police... What is it, ceremony? Budget inning, and Chief Morales told me that this one is one of the biggest one. Tuesday at 1 o'clock. Okay? So everyone is invited, and then I want to wish all you a happy Thanksgiving. Feliz Dia de Acción de Gracias a todos los que nos están viendo. So I want to be grateful this year for all of you here, even though sometimes we disagree, we agree, but I really enjoy working with all of you. I am grateful for the staff that we have, for Chad, when you're patient with me.
Likewise, you're patient with me as well.
And thank you, Tracy, to you too, okay? So. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned.